And tonight, we're here again to conduct business for the district. And we appreciate your attendance. President Gray will be here in just a few minutes, but he asked me to start the meeting. So we will start at 180.25, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 181.25, roll call attendance, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
We got Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Hines, present. Ms. May.
Present.
Neil, absent. Cox.
Absent.
Absent. Dr. Weaver.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 183.25 is the consent agenda.
You have to do 182.25.
Oh, I'm sorry. I went right over that. 182.25, citizens' comments on agenda items only. Do any citizens wish to speak?
Do you want me to stand up? I've been there three minutes.
I'm sorry I looked at you.
You did. I got to look, so no.
Welcome, President Gray.
Thank you.
We're at 183.25.
All right. All right, so seeing no citizens' comments on the agenda items. Next item is 183.25, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Ms. Hines?
We have Ms. May.
I'm sorry, let Ms. May catch up. You just read my email today, so let me catch up.
I told you to read slow.
So I'm not consent agenda.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'm good.
Yes, okay. Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, we got five. Okay.
All right, next item is 184.25, review and approval of business service and finance. Recommendation or per resolution authorizing the feasance of 2024 state aid notes. This was the item that was tabled last night, I believe, and put onto the agenda for tonight. Mr. Gray, do you have anything else you wanted to add about it?
Yep, I just want to add that Mr. Crowley also sent me an email just recapping the resolution, and I gave you each a copy at your seat, so if you want to just take a look through some of the notes. And then he also included just a couple pages of what the investment amount would be and so forth. So if you want to just take a second to glance at that before.
Sure. So just while everybody's reading this, if I want to clarify, his belief is that we actually end up ahead with this, right? That almost a million dollars.
Yes, but I believe, let's see, let me look at the exact amounts. Because he put it so, yep, if you look at, I think there's literally like a one, I'd have to quote him today, it was like literally like a one penny or something difference between the two.
Yeah, it ends up evening back out then.
So I mean, it might be, it was like a penny ahead or a penny that they owes back.
Yeah, so it's 860 to 830, yeah. Yeah, it's almost even.
Looks good to me.
All right.
And again, thank you for the details. We definitely appreciate the input. Everything is really specific. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments, questions about this item?
No.
All right, do I have a motion to approve business service and finance, item one as presented, and waive the need to read the enclosed resolution?
Support.
Well, do I have a motion first?
I make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion, support. All right, Ms. Hines?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Hines, yes. And President Gray?
Yes. All right. And the next item was also Ms. Curry, recommendation to purchase a Ford F-650 salt truck?
Yes, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the 2,025 salt truck at a cost not to exceed $115,819.
And I do want to clarify, this was initially presented at the finance special meeting that we had, so this is the second time the Board has seen this. This is the second read on it.
Yes.
Do I have any questions, comments from anybody?
So this is just the same salt truck, one salt truck?
Yeah, the one we discussed a couple of weeks ago. It just wasn't on the agenda last night, so.
Okay.
All right, seeing no questions or comments, do I have a motion? Do I have support?
Support.
All right, Ms. Hines, roll call vote.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Hines, yes. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Curry. The next item is 185.25, and that is the superintendent's evaluation. That's the main reason we are here tonight. This is a goal setting for the superintendent evaluation process. We're not actually doing an evaluation tonight. Ms. May?
So, good evening, everyone. As President Gray shared, we're here this evening to set goals for the superintendent's evaluation along with identify how we will measure those goals. And so, just as a single note, everyone was trained on the process August 13th, if I'm not mistaken. And so, we will follow that exact process. In advance, I ask that each of us receive the superintendent evaluation tool along with the superintendent's proposed goals. Sorry, I just spoke too close, I'm sorry. The superintendent's proposed goals, along with data, our board policy around the evaluation process, and the, we did not have a contract per se, but we had a posting. So that's the information that we received. Earlier today, I also chatted with Mrs. Curry in regards to receiving PSAT data and MSEP data just so that we were able to look K-12 and not just K-8 when we talk about goal setting, okay? And so, to begin the process, I think for us as a board, it would be beneficial for us to start with identifying what do we want to accomplish for the 2425 school year? So what is it that we would like to see for our district for the 2425 school year? And, I don't know, President Gray, am I okay to just go around and have people?
Yes, yes, yeah, go for it.
Make sure I'm staying in order of the process. And so, I am going to ask you, Mr. Gray, if you're okay with starting first and we just kind of work our way down? If you have a particular vision or what you would like to see for the district? And then after each of us, each person's share, then we kind of come to a consensus on what it is that we want that to look like as a district. And I don't know if this is something you've thought about, or you guys need a few minutes to think about it, so I apologize. But this was part of the process that was through the training. And I'm just following, actually, the questions that were there.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. And if Mr. Gray is not ready, does somebody else would like to share?
Give me a second, I'm still getting stuff for you.
I would like to see continued improvement in the, in student achievement in terms of, in terms of, and us take another look at what is proficiency versus, versus what is accomplishment. I want to make sure that we're clear on that. Proficient is, as I understand it, not necessarily a student accelerating. It means that they're at grade level. I would like to see more of our students be at grade level, and I'd like to see a lot more of our students that are above grade level. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Hines, and I would like to say, I definitely want to focus on literacy that's so important, especially with the state cutting some of our funds in that area, so. And then, too, a lot of times with literacy and comprehension, because if you don't really know how to read, you can't comprehend. It's going to be very difficult to pass tests. And definitely working on attendance, because if we're having issues with people, student count and stuff, and I know a lot of times, with the bus issue, it can be a problem. Because when I was a parent, when my son was in school, and I noticed, being a single parent, when the bus didn't come, like, he went to, we live in Westland, he went to the Innovative Academy way and way, that's four or five miles out. So if he missed the bus, he didn't go to school that day if I had to be at work. Or I'm late to work, I might lose my job because there's not a bus. And that can really hamper when it comes to attendance. And then, too, attendance, if you're not in school, you're missing classes and you're more likely not to get the better grades. So definitely want to focus on literacy, the super important comprehension, attendance, and math is important as well, but just really being able to read, because I know when we had looked at the numbers, it was, you know, and we had that COVID loss, you know, we're still dealing with that, and just really trying to get the kids confidence and giving that literacy up to par, especially like, you know, losing money in that area with the state.
So also, I would like to see more transparency with the students' achievement. We don't know what's going on with the students because it's not being presented to us. So one of the things that I would like to see at our monthly meeting, when the students are saying, whichever students are saying the pledge, I would like for their principal or whatever staff member is here representing them to give us a report on the school, what's good going on and what's not so good, and what they think that we can do to support them. Because so much is going on, we don't know about currency until it's out of hands. We don't know about the student achievement because we're not getting the regular reports. We're not getting quarterly reports to nothing. But I think having the school report that at the meeting would give us all a glimpse on what's going on in the schools.
Thank you.
Could I say one more thing, Ms. Hines?
Sure.
Don't get no ideas because I said something.
No.
That's why they have them lined up at the funeral, so they won't have, when somebody says something, they won't come back and say, "Oh, I got something to say." No, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure. I'm not sure what to say now. I serve on the disciplinary committee. And I would like to see, you know, I'll say it this way. When you look at it through the lens of being on the committee, everybody, everybody that comes to the committee is in some kind of trouble.
Right.
There are, you know, for everyone that is before the disciplinary committee, there are hundreds more that are not. So I don't want to make too big a deal out of this. But I would think a good goal would be some kind of diffusion with our student body, some kind of teaching. I mean, if we're here to educate, maybe we should talk to the kids about how futile fighting is, things like that. So anyway, I would just leave that under student behavior.
Student behavior.
Yeah, so I would like to, and I'm sorry with having mentioned, you said, "Don't steal things," that's what you said, but I was already thinking about saying something about this. Is the increased transparency is, you know, like you said, we don't find things out until they're too late. I would like to see a more regular reporting on student achievement. I would say, in the year I've been on the board, we've received reporting one time, I believe, on student achievement.
That's true.
And I think that should be a regular part of our conversations. I mean, we hear we're getting regular reporting on finances, and as a board, that is a very important part of our role here. However, now that we have found ourselves in, I don't want to say a situation where we are in great financial shape, we still have hard decisions to make. But we have a lot more runway than we believe we did in the past. I would like the, next year, to not be so focused on the finances and have just as much focus over the next year on student achievement as we've spent this year focusing on solving the financial crisis. Because at the end of the day, we do have a student achievement crisis. And it is just as dire as the financial crisis that we have focused on over this past year, but it is much more long-reaching, and it has been in existence much longer in this district than this current financial crisis. So I would like to see, you know, regular reporting, and a schedule developed towards that. And also, more clear vision on what that's going to look like and how we're going, and not just what these goals are, but more clear vision on, okay, what are the steps that you plan to take to get there in that reporting?
I was ready, sorry. So honestly, I am in agreement with this. I don't think it's a secret that I have been pushing about student achievement and how important that is to me. And so, that is definitely a goal that I would like to see. And not just to focus on NWEA, but K-12, so that we're talking about what it looks like across all the grade levels as well as in regards to our various demographic groups as well. I do like the idea, and I would love to see the regular reporting. I like the idea that Mrs. Abney Mitchell shared in regards to the school that's doing the pledge, does a highlight and not a highlight about, you know, just, these are the activities at the school, but the things that they're doing in terms of academics. So maybe it's related to their MYKIP report or their MYKIP building plan. But we can get into the weeds of that. But those would be, that's the one thing, so the academics. And then the other piece for me is attendance, right? So we just partnered with RISA to bring a program in for attendance, so I would like to see how that's going. Also, when I think about these things, I think about the return on investment, right? So when we think about how much money we are spending or have been willing to spend on various programs and technology and whatever else, I'd like to know how those things are impacting student achievement, because that's really what the purpose of that investment is, right? So like, to have the follow-up to that. So, I wrote the things down that we said, and I feel like I can surmise that. And if I surmise it, then can we come to a consensus? And then, once we have a consensus on what we visualize or how we want to move the district forward or what our goals are for the district, then we can look at the goals that Mrs. Curry has provided for us and then help to, we work together to establish, to flesh out her goal. Does that sound good to everyone?
It sounds good to me.
I think that sounds great.
Okay. What I wrote down, what I heard people say, I heard continued improvement regarding student achievement, defining proficiency versus accomplishment, so that we have students that are not just at grade level, but above grade level. I heard a focus on literacy and attendance. And then, I also wrote around the transparency with student achievement, so we want report outs, consistent report outs. Regular, we want to talk about, something about student behavior and what that looks like, right? And so, I think that would also tie into the attendance piece, right? We can have it tie into that. And then, the action steps that we're taking, and then the return on investment.
Yeah, can I add something about transparency? Not just telling us information, telling us information without spin. And I'm not saying you've done this so far, but just in the past, I believe that sometimes when this information is presented to us, it has been in an attempt to present it in the most positive light, when, you know, we're the board. We don't want the most positive light. We want the reality. We want to know what we're actually facing.
Yeah, and if we have to abandon something, right? Like, this is why we have to abandon it, because it's not working. We thought it would work, but it's not, right? And that happens. The other piece that I'll just add, and it's not so much as of a goal to say, but when we talk about the transparency, also understanding that the board represents the community. So when questions are asked or when reporting out is done, think of it as reporting out for the community and not just the board, right? So like, reporting out in a way that parents understand what we're talking about. Because we use a lot of educational jargon, we make assumptions that people know what we're talking about, and parents need to know what's happening in the building. And even if there's three people in the audience, people still watch the, right? People still watch the videos, right? But, and I wasn't on tonight, but yes, just that, you know, understanding that people do watch our meetings on YouTube, right? And so, when they go and they watch the meetings, they should be able to understand. And that's one of the pieces that I think is very important. So, with that, what I hear is that we would like to have a goal focused on student achievement, attendance, and behavior, addressing those three things. And then, along with that goal, would be strategies or activities that engage in the regular reporting out, and we can establish what that looks like at this point. So do we want to report out at every board meeting, which it sounds like we do in terms of if there's a school that's coming out to report, then that school is doing a highlight? Is that what we're thinking? And I'm asking, I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be, it's not obviously not going to be, you know, like, testing scores every, because we don't get new scores every month, but there is something to report.
No. This is a collaborative, this is, yes.
As I'm thinking about that, I really like the idea of the buildings, because they, I think we could almost, or I could even almost, I'm going to just use the word template for example. So like, if we had Edison next week, right, or we just had Edison, is where were you currently, what is your last achievement scores, right? What is your current student attendance? What are your current student behaviors? So like, it could be these three things that they're posting on, and then give like strengths and challenges of each, right? Because even though we'll have an overall district picture of those things, by hearing the difference at schools, because it's going to look different at Hamilton as it's going to look at Schweitzer, as it's going to look at John Glenn. And then, it'll also let the people, as they do that each week, piece it all together as, well, here's what it looks like, the giant umbrella from the district, but then as it goes down right into the classrooms.
That would be awesome.
So I think that it would be easy for me, actually, really like that idea, to build out then, here is what you would report on. So depending on if you're coming in January, or depending on if you're coming in November, right, you're going to give the most recent data on, it could be a local assessment that your teachers are giving at the high school to start the year. It could be your letters assessment at an elementary school. So it really fits to their, to our district framework of assessment of where it is in their building. So yeah, I actually really do like that idea.
I got a whole lot of good ideas.
Yeah, you do, like, that is really good.
Yeah.
And that kind of just pairs with the, I like, it pairs with the whole team, too, meaning not just about your school, but it's about the whole district. So I like that it links it together.
If you're ever looking for some help, let me know.
Yeah.
And I'd like to, with you guys, with the student count, I love that, the whole overview. When you see plus and minus, then we can, okay, we're having some issues in this area. So that was really, really informative, you know, it kind of helps us see the big picture.
Before I go any further, I do want to make a quick motion. I just want to make a motion to suspend regular order, so we can just have a conversation, you know, about these things. Do I have support of that?
Support.
All in favor?
Yes.
Like, let's just make this a conversation.
That's what's supposed to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Dr. Weaver has been trying to say something.
Can I talk, you know?
Yes, I know what I'm saying.
Not yet?
Okay, so student achievement, attendance, and the eight areas. Yeah, I'd like to talk even more like this, because I even think of, as we're presenting, even then within those, right? So is even also like trends we want to look at? Do you want to look at more like where they're currently at as of now, and then the goal to move forward? So I think even talking a little bit more about that piece, too, of it, right? Just because of, it could have been our, as the course of the year goes, because we're only going to see each building one time, right? So I also feel at that same time, as buildings are coming in, we as a district team are going to do, you'll see like in October, right, the NWA, or, sorry, November, because October is really long already, the fall NWA data. So you'll have principals who might, who have come in October, leaving theirs, but at the same time, you're going to get the big district picture of where we're at. And then, you're going to get that again for NWA in, I think it's February, and then again in May. So we still build those presentations in, right? Mr. Bessick would still come in and do the big picture on attendance and where we're at. And I think we just had to be really intentional to get all buildings here, though, because I believe it's mostly the elementaries who do the pledge. So then, we would build in two, to make sure we have middle schools coming to do it and high schools. I just don't want to lose that piece of it.
And, and, and for that piece.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, and for that, if you're blocking me, I can't see. And for that piece, I was thinking that we could have the schools, the high schools, we can have the students come in and report out, you know, like the student council, what's going on in your school, you know, what you feel like the struggles is. Because when you meet with the principals and everything, you find out about that. And somehow, we can rotate to have the middle schools go, come in, you know, have the students report out and have the parents report out from those. Because when you talk about high schools, they know what's going on. They know why is discipline going on and everything like that. Because, you know, you get those reports from the principal anyway. So I was thinking about having the high school come out and do a report. They did it in the past when they talked about sports and stuff like that in.
So do you want them to add it? Because I see that we'd want the same, if we're going to do student achievement, attendance, and behavior, right? Those are like the three big rocks.
Yeah.
That I think I'd want to hear that, those three things from every building principal.
Okay.
From now till June. However, I think that if we wanted to also get student voice in there, right, and parent voice, which would be more perception data, but I think that's important, too. That could be through a survey, though, right, that is developed through their teams or even through their school improvement teams, they have to collect that perception survey.
Right.
So they could, you know, add some of those pieces. But I think it's really important that we keep it consistent of what's reported out for each building based on, you know, our district growth models and our district programming.
Okay, okay, that makes, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Just to keep it going. But I do, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I would, I would like to propose something that may or may not be doable under student achievement. The people that work with our students every day, which are their counselors, I wonder if it would be proper to ask our counselors, ask our counselors to judge their student load by three questions. Number one, how many students do you have that are achieving, that are, that are doing well? Number two, second question would be, how many students do you have that are almost there, but if they had a little more help, they'd be there? And then, the third question. And then the third question would be, how many students do you think you have? That just do not care about being there? They're there to socialize, they're not there to, um, you know, to, for any grades or anything like that. So, I think it would be good from a counselor perspective. To, um, have a report back to the superintendent and then to the board. It's just another way to view the information. Um, and it, it obviously, it's nothing that we can hold the counselors to. Because they're looking over their records and, and guestimating. But I'd like to have those three questions have some kind of answer with our counselors.
So I, so I guess when I look at goals and evaluations, right, I separate, I'm gonna use the word feelings and the word facts. Like, they're two completely different lanes, right? So I think with, I'm just gonna use the achievement and the attendance and the behavior, we have hard facts that we follow, right? Like, we poll attendance data, we poll discipline data, um, we poll attendance rates. We literally have a growth model already established, um, across the district that people use for evaluations, NWA scores and so forth. And I think that if we did that with counselors, right, we'd also have to do the feelings and facts with, across all other groups. From the classrooms to the, um, parents, to the community and so forth. Because what I might think is that, Mr. Gray doesn't wanna show up for school, right? Miss May might be like, yeah, he does, he comes to my class every single day. So I think that that's where, um, I mean, use the feelings part, right? Like, my, my perspective and my opinion might be different than your opinion, so it's gonna skew the data a little bit. So I think it's gotta be just, if we do, we truly do, if we're gonna get survey data, we literally survey everybody. And we get concrete data, factual data, and then feelings, cuz it's two, two different lanes.
I, I'm not opposed to that, I was not thinking in terms of specific data. Um, in terms of, um, you get a, a feeling after a while. Whether you wanted to add teachers or, or whatever, that's fine. But you get a feeling after a while, um, what a child's potential is. In terms of, hey, they're not gonna try very hard, or they're doing great in the middle group. Which is, I think, a lot of where we are. Uh, we have high performing students, and we have a lot of students that with just a little more help. Uh, could be high performing students. So however you want to build that out would, would be, uh, your thought pr- process. Mine would be, uh, to ask the counselors just to make estimants. So that, you know, we would know.
So what I'm hearing is that could be potential evidence, the survey and then the survey results, right? So I'm just shifting us and not to say that we can't continue to have a conversation, but I'm pulling out those pieces that can be considered as evidence. As we set this goal, right? So survey, student surveys and the results, as well as parent surveys and results. Um, I think that would be powerful, especially when you talk about attendance as well as behavior, right? Cuz that behavior piece also encompasses the socio-emotional learning. And so that gets into some of the things that you're asking about. Um, so are we okay to now kinda look at the, not kind of, but look at the?
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Okay, as far as, you know, when they, when the ones say the pledge and they have the, um, report out. You know, it wouldn't be a bother, it wouldn't be too much if we had a elementary school and a high school have a readout. If we have two of them in one day, just to get them all done.
Okay.
You know, the most important thing is to have something about the students on the agenda.
Yeah.
Cuz it been two years and we never had it on the agenda since I've been here.
And I think adding to that, just a piece of like, having a, um, a template, and maybe setting a time, right? So that people have a template, and then they know how much time we're gonna spend for each of those. I don't know if it's fifteen minutes per school, whatever, I don't know, I'm just throwing out a number.
And it probably would be very intentional too about not allowing them to do too much other, right? So it's very, like, it's, um, purposeful, you know, we're getting the information we need. And then I'm also thinking that because Kim and April are so wonderful, right? As we have the templates, whatever, as they collect it, we're kind of even keeping it rundown at each school, right? So it's kind of all, all together as we go, so you can kinda remember some of the things that like, hey, you know, um. John Glenn's strength and challenges are here, but they can massively learn from the school over here doing some things. And even helps the district team even make some of those connections of what's going on, or even see what is literally happening K twelve, right? Or what's just happening in pockets.
I thought, I'd like to.
Probably add a program evaluation piece to that too.
I'd just like to, um, say this. Um, our board meetings are long enough. Um, last night was three hours and fifteen minutes. I don't know, I personally, I, I wouldn't need an oral report from a principal. Give me the paperwork and, and let me decipher it for myself. Um, I'm just saying in terms of, uh, when you come to these meetings, the board comes to do business. But then there are times, like last night, when it, it just becomes prohibitive. With the, uh, with the late nights. So it's just my thought, I, I can read it on paper, I don't need two fifteen minute presentations every.
I respectfully disagree, because students are a business. And I believe that parents and the community should hear what's happening in the schools. There are taxpayers, we are right now asking them to vote on a millage, they should know what's happening in those schools. That, that's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I don't think this is something that we're saying would take, you know, twenty minutes out of the night or anything. I think these, we, we want, you know, kinda concise reports that would, you know, I don't know how, how long, we're thinking with these.
Well, I heard fifteen minutes.
Well, you gotta remember, last night, we also had a closed session. And, and just because you are capable of taking a piece of paper and reading it. You gotta think about it, seven people on the board, and we are all different learners. We learn in different ways, where you may be able to take this piece of paper and read it, I may need the demonstration. I may have to draw some pictures. So you have to think about everybody on the board, and you gotta also think about your experience and your time on the board. And we have two new people come in, I consider myself still a newbie, um, so we have to consider all of that.
I think if we could narrow down, so we're all on the same page too of what do you, what do we want reported out for attendance, right? Is it a average daily attendance rate of kids in school? Is it the trend in attendance, um, for student achievement? Is it they're, you know, looking at what we truly use as a district, right? Whether it's NWA, a local assessment, letters, a literacy assessment. So that way, it's that concise, and they could say, um, then it truly becomes a five, ten minute thing. Like, if they exactly know this is what we're looking for as a team to report out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's almost like a point of pride too in a way. I really do appreciate the people from Winter Walker to come and express how amazing, you know, what they're doing in the schools. It's like a insight, cuz I, I do need to get back in the schools, it's been a while. Like, I used to actually every year visit, you know, you have to really plan it, cuz there's a lot of schools. But to see like how they're so passionate about what they do at Winter Walker, like, we got this program, we got this, and you got the kids, like you're saying, it's really, you know, when people watch these videos. Oh, I wanna go to Wayne West End, because they're doing this at the school, they're doing this. So it's actually bringing, you know, more people to be attractive, cuz that was a really good presentation that the kids did. And even, um, in the audience, he was talking about how it's important to have, you know, Canton being represented, you know, with the school, and it's, you know, as a parent. So that, that makes a difference when you hear those points of pride, you know, what makes them excited about.
But on that point, I do wanna clarify that we don't just want the points of pride, because we wanna know what, what the challenges they're having, what struggles they're having, so that we know how we can support. I want them to be comfortable telling us.
Love our principals, they're like my favorite people, but they will literally then give you a half hour presentation, which they will, they will be great things, all the things. But they will, we will be here for a half an hour per school.
No, and I don't think we, we need to be, and that, I mean, I'm fine with whatever. But I feel like if we are, as we finalize the goal, right? Then we get into what that looks like in terms of measurement, which then will help, um, you and your team to formulate what that template should look like, right? And I feel like once the template is developed, it can be shared with the board, we can get feedback on the template, and then we can gotta, kinda go from there. And I also think that we can set a time limit, so if we wanna say ten minutes each school, that's twenty minutes out of a board meeting. If we wanna say eight minutes, I don't know, we need to maybe figure out what that could look like in that, that time. But I also don't want it to be where we make the time so short, where it's really like a checklist, right? So I'm just standing up here so I can say, hey, I made this presentation to the board.
Yeah.
Does, does that make sense?
And you could even consider too, if it's, uh, the students, and this is just an idea, cuz I know sometimes change can be hard too, right? So that the pledge maybe comes from us as a team, and then maybe the right student and the principal, and they do that report based on the template. So that could be a shift and change too, right, just an idea.
And I'm open to allowing, so, you and your team, I don't know how the other board members feel about that, to, to kinda navigate what that would look like.
And if we continue to do the financial workshops as we have started doing. That would help with the time with the, um, meeting also, like Fred proposed last night for us. Because we have already went over the financial stuff, you know, to just take a vote on it.
Yeah.
Cuz you know, we broke it down, we even got a compliment from a parent last night that, excuse me, that she watched the video. And from the financial workshop, and it was very enlightening to her. She was able to understand it more, cuz that's all we was talking about.
Right.
And I know y'all don't wanna come in here for another night just to get report out on the schools.
Okay, so, Mrs. Curry, do you wanna share your goal? We do have it.
Sure.
In front of us, there are two.
Yep, so there's two. Um, which I think are around the same, I'm not gonna use the word same topics, I'm not gonna use the word theme, but. So the first one, um, is regarding transparency. So enhance transparent communication and strengthen relationships between family, schools and the community. And then I broke it down to what it would look like as far as clear feedback channels, regular updates. Um, doing some more community engagement meetings. Now, as I think through this now, I think we could easily tie this piece into, um, the board meetings. With that student piece and that template, like, I think it just goes right along with that piece. Um, which then is, I think it's still important, and I could even go, I would still like to do some more things with the community. Is still hosting more community engagement meetings, whether it's, um, I don't wanna use coffee with the superintendent, but just, um, more my style. Meetings like that, right, just to get feedback and be solution oriented. And, um, I have some ideas what some topics could look like, but I think that could definitely be separate than the goal. Like, that would still be something I would do separate than this. But I think I would take what we talked about in this sense and build that model at the board meeting. So working with the administrators and the students, um, I could develop what that template or that frame would look like. Bring it to you, right, around the student achievement, the attendance and behaviors. And these would be the regular updates, you know, have those clear feedbacks, um, of what's going on. And district union leadership, I'd probably even share some of those updates, I could tie those to those meetings. So I would rework this a little bit, uh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't necessarily know that you have to rework this.
Okay.
I think that the community engagement meetings, that is definitely a great strategy. This is, now, this is Kimberly talking, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking for the board, but I thought that this one could remain.
Okay.
I think that your meeting with the district leadership, that could, union leadership, that could remain. And then I think the, um, clear feedback channels, that could remain.
Okay.
And then your regular updates, this is where that.
That's at the board meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, good, yes, okay, and add that in.
And then, I don't know, how do others feel about that?
Mm-hmm, no, actually, before even seeing this, I was planning on suggesting here, we can stick to new forums like that. Uh, I, I was gonna say, two, two a year before is even better.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
I was thinking quarterly, and then, um, I was recently building, so we do cross department meetings. So I literally have everybody from the department, we come bi-weekly and we all come together. So we meet every other Tuesday morning, so from business to communications, you name it, there's a representative there. Um, and during our next one, actually, I started even building the template with Ms. Marky. Is that what, what presentations are coming ahead for the board meeting for the year, right? Because I'm truly a, I'm a type A, I like to have things planned out, sometimes drive people nuts with it, but it's just how I, it's how my brain works. And as people get to know me, it doesn't drive them as nuts anymore. Um, so I also wanna kind of take that piece and with what we build out at the monthlies, right? Cuz I also don't wanna get so inundated, so that if I know I'm doing a district presentation, I probably would only have one school that day. Right, probably wouldn't do two. Um, so even as those are built out, because we've already mapped out, you know, when we do the student achievement, when we're doing, do the attendance. Um, I think it's really important that we do an update on transportation, so there's just some big items that, you know, are coming up, that I think we just need to, to piece that. So I would link that in here with, it's kind of more as like an artifact or as an FYI, right? So I would link both of those, what it looks like, just thinking out loud in my head, okay? And I would do that with the regular updates as well, okay? And then I do have, as you see at the bottom, some success measures, the surveys, um. Attendance participation rates at the various, and then document actions taken in response to feedback. Because I think it's really important that if we're, we're doing surveys, right, well then what do we do with it, right? We can't just read it and then say, yep, it's great, so they think we're doing horrible, they think we're doing well, and let's move on, right? There's gotta be then a, a now what. And even if the now what is, um, here are the results, here's our action steps, right? Or it's a, um, I don't know, now we are in a different financial situation, so we're still gonna stay the course and do some things. But maybe not as drastic as we were before. Um, the next one.
Before you do the next one, Jen, I just wanna check in with everyone, are we, um, at a consensus on this goal? And the strategies listed for this goal and the evidence? Perfect, I just wanted to make sure, so we didn't have to go back.
Yeah, no, thank you. So the next one, I did around literacy. Um, I'm really in my, just to give you a little background here, I'm really thinking ground up, right? So truly that if we give children the foundational skills that they need, right? It takes some time to see that, but as it goes, right, if we really build that foundation very intentionally. Um, you will see that academic achievement go up. So, um, I'll just, so the next goal, enhance literacy outcomes across the district. By ensuring that all K three teachers are thoroughly trained in foundational reading skills and instruction. By June twenty twenty six, at least fifty percent of K three students will achieve their projected growth targets from fall to spring. As measured by the NWA reading assessment. And then the strategies include, um, training. And I wanna preface this with, all teachers are still gonna be trained and get professional development on various things. But I'm really, really honing in on that K three staff, um, as we have been starting last year. So there is specific trainings, implementation with fidelity, and then progress monitoring. And then the success measures you would see are linked to NWA scores. I'd also be looking at the letter scores that we do within the programming. Um, but to give you a little more background too, in your, on NWEA. I did a, like a note, or I'm gonna call it a cheat sheet for you in the folder, and it talks about student projected growth. Um, let's see. I think it literally just says like NWA.
Information.
Yes.
The first sheet in the folder.
Yes. Um, so just if you're not familiar with NWEA, um, I think most of you, most of you are. But of just, uh, what does it mean by projected growth? And, um, just some general key points with that, with that assessment. And then I can get even later into our growth model, but you wanna just take a look at that? And this goes with the student achievement, um, piece as well. So, yep, feedback, questions. So, yep, feedback, questions?
So I have a couple of thoughts.
Yes.
I struggle with the number of fifty percent when we talk about projected growth for students, um, cause every student has projected growth. And so for me, for a goal to be only fifty percent of the students hitting that projected growth, I'm a parent that now says, well, what about my child?
Okay.
Right? So, and I looked at um this was, I think, yeah, was shared earlier, um in advance, the growth calculations. And so I'm not I'm assuming this is from last year where it says met projected growth, right? And so for each of the schools.
Are you on this one? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So, and we're talking about literacy, right?
Yes.
So we're not quite at fifty percent, but we have quite a few schools that are very close to fifty percent. And so I wonder why fifty percent is not a higher number, because if we're having a conversation with a parent, you know what I mean, and it's like, where does my child fit?
Yep.
In this, we're only thr- striving for fifty percent. I understand what the the baseline is, but I still feel like we should shoot higher than fifty percent. So that's one piece of it, right? And that's the the K three piece, but I also know that we're a district, we're K twelve. So I want us to have more. I would like to see you have goals that encompass not just K three.
Okay.
But K twelve, right? And so I understand we have this different measurements, but it's still all tied to the work that's being done, right? And so if we have a goal that only focuses on K three, then it leaves that door to say like, well, are we not focused on four through twelve? And I believe that we are. I'm not saying that we're not, but of course, there's the idea of what is written is what gets done, right? And if I'm a parent that has an eleventh grader, then I wanna know, why are we not focusing on eleventh grade? Like I had an eleventh grader here that's struggling. So when I think about those pieces, I feel like maybe we can expand that goal some. And I don't know how others feel about that, but those are just my thoughts.
No, I I mean, I agree. I think I do, I do understand that K, like long term, K three is where you can make the biggest impact. So long term for the district's numbers, that's great, but yeah, we wanna make sure, well, I I know it's it's a lot harder to make an impact after third grade on some of these things, but you know, we still need to try, and so what are we doing for that?
I'm going to just mention something here. And I realize I'm gonna get in a lot of trouble for doing it. But um my thought has at least occurred to me in my mind. Because the board is not a part of hiring teachers. As as I sit here tonight, I don't know who's on the committee that runs those meetings. And I'm not asking for data, I'm just throwing it out there. Are we getting the best of the best? Or are we settling for the best of the worst? I'm saying that we want, if if all of this is going to happen, we have to have very high functioning teachers. Not necessarily someone that's been moved from district to district because of of whatever reasons. There's, I don't need a response, don't want one. I'm just wanting us to look in that vein, because Wayne Westland deserves the best of the best, I feel. And only the best of the best is gonna be able to move their classrooms. And we may have that, I don't know. I'm just putting it out there.
Originally, when I looked at this goal, right, I literally started with their challenge statement, because I really, our challenge statement through our strategic plan, right? I live and breathe by truly if we strengthen tier one instruction. So going off of what you were just saying, Ms. May, is I, I think that maybe together we can kind of even look at that, because tier one instruction happens from pre-K, right? Cause I'd even then, if we're gonna go all brand, I'd even like to go pre-K through twelve, and we can focus on that tier one instruction, right? And knowing that challenge statement, if we strengthen tier one instruction by implementing, and this is wordy, but applying research-based practices, then student per- performance will increase, right? And we do that by building our teachers, giving them skills, right? Who then give the skills to all kids in the classroom. And tier one hits all students, right? And that's why I am, like at my core, people who know me well too, one of my beliefs is it happens at tier one. Which means you're, everybody's in this kindergarten room, not pulled out for interventions at the moment, not. It's tier one instruction given by the the teacher in the classroom. So um, and I'm just thinking out loud as we go through that, we can even take this piece, right? And it becomes a pre-K through, I still like to pre-K through twelve. Like even backing up before, because our stat on my air.
I just missed pre-K.
No, but I'm glad you lifted that when you had said that, because I'm thinking it was.
And when I think about literacy at the high school level, right, I think about discipline literacy, right? The goal can remain literacy, but there's that piece, because that's really where a lot of kids struggle. Is that discipline literacy. And so discipline literacy meaning the content literacy, right? Cause kids come in and if they're already struggling readers, then they have the, now you have to learn the content vocabulary and language, and that's where kids, you know, continue to struggle. And so maybe that's, and when you talk about tier one, maybe that's the piece, right? Whereas that that lens that is K twelve, but literacy focused.
Yeah, so do we then, here's, I I could even truly just take the goal statement from curriculum and instruction. And that could, you know, be the goal in itself, right, from the strategic plan, which links right to disciplinary literacy, um classroom observations, data conversations, and just break that, I mean, down. And then we could talk about what does that growth look like, right? So what percentage on that N W E A, right?
Jen, which one are you looking at?
So I went from, it's right at, so the cha- the goal, it's uh, it's the goal statements for twenty-four, twenty-five.
It's two goal statements for twenty-four. Do you mind if I read that one into record just for the audience to hear? So the goal statement for twenty-four, twenty-five under curriculum and instruction is by June twenty twenty-four.
It should be June twenty twenty-five.
So June, by June twenty twenty-five, all teachers will provide evidence of competency and implementation of M D E's literacy essentials pre-K through five and disciplinary literacy six through twelve, as measured six through twelve by surveys, classroom observations, and data conversations. And K five by foundational skill and N W E A data. So the only thing that I would like to add to that, for me, as I read that out loud, is just maybe, and I don't know where we are with the curriculum and instruction, but what other assessments can we add? Because these feel very subjective. Survey is classroom observation and data conversations. Like, that doesn't feel concrete to me.
Right.
So do we have?
We do. So I would definitely add the letters data that we use um in elementary. I would, I would also like to add the N W A data for the middle school and high school, because they use it now as well. That's, that's across the board. And I think that we could, I still like the idea of using surveys only, because I think implementation is very important, right? So as we're doing observations and we're um surveying our teachers as they're doing the training, then they're the ones that are um using the essentials and the discipline literacy in their classrooms. We gotta also, especially when you get to the secondary, it's more of, they still need more, they're in the forefront of more training, right? And more of what the skills look like, where elementary has been much more in the weeds and had a lot of the training with the early literacy tools. But I think we can definitely use N W A across the board, and we can use the um letters data at the elementary as well.
Can we add um students? So you have teachers, so for surveys, you're talking about teacher surveys, but can we have student and parent surveys? Cause I do believe that that's a way to increase student voice and and their learning. And this is just me talking, like other board members, please, cause I feel like it's.
You're by far the most knowledgeable of us to hear about these items.
Well, I'd be able to say a little while ago about the fifty percent. I also struggled with that. I mean, the conversation went, but I wanted to be said for the record that I also could um struggle with the, okay, for just fifty percent of our children to be able to perform literacy. Um, I would like to see that um break, the a percentage go up, increase also. I I was gonna say that, but then Fred started talking, so.
I think we could even, um, and I think a lot of times too, right, like we look at big picture. So like, when you look at this, right, it's fifty percent of all, all the students grouped together. So I think when you break it down, which I could even, we could even look at that piece too, as.
So it's not like right here, Edison, it's not the fifty-three point thirty-two percent is not just that one school?
That is Edison, and then when you look it down at the bottom, that's the district, right? But this is Edison as a whole.
Okay, so this is the whole district. But still, then the schools is still. Okay, yeah, okay.
I I only lift that only because if if we even break it down, which I should have brought it.
What is the number three for?
That is the rubric score. So if you go to, I'm glad you said that, let, if you go to, I have so many packets, the growth model.
Okay.
List um the district growth criteria for teacher evaluations.
Okay.
So the three, if you go to the back page, to give background, so probably, I'm gonna say ten years ago, it could even be longer. We met with our.
Okay, I I I can figure.
Oh, okay, I was gonna give background how it was established, but um.
Oh, okay, effective.
Right, so we met with our um teachers, unions, and everything of how do we wanna define student growth? And how, what percentage um equates to the effective rating on the rubric.
Okay, okay.
So you see that between thirty-one percent and seventy percent is a three.
Okay, thank you so very much. You know, I really appreciate this. This is the most conversation we have had about student achievement. So I appreciate this.
And I appreciate you being honest, cause I assumed, I'm like, oh, they probably had this, and I was thinking you you might have not.
We have been asking for it. So we appreciate it.
And then what generally happens is, right, whatever the teachers are doing, the principals follow, central office follows. That's for the growth piece for the overall evaluation score. However, I know that there's two different growth pieces, right, to the superintendent's evaluation. So it's you have your overall growth, and then you have your growth to meet your your goals. Cause I'm the same thing too. So I just assume that whatever the teachers and the principals would do, I would fi- I would mirror that. But then for the, this piece, right, I think is what Ms. May is talking for, is we can have more discussion on the fifty percent. That's kinda how I saw that, right? Is that right? Okay. Yeah, and I don't want you to think that I don't think our students are gonna succeed. As I looked through it, I even broke it down, like the K three data over the course of the years. So that, you know, one of the, um, I think it was last year, they were at forty-eight point two seven, right? So that's how I came up with that fifty percent for that K three. So that I was like, okay, about a percentage of growth from that forty-eight when I just took that K three route. So you just kinda know where my brain was coming from with the fifty percent.
And it's like you're making it measurable, cause you don't set to go too high, where's that possible, like you stepped, you know, like.
Yeah, yes and no. I mean, I see it fifty percent too is like average. It means you're performing like your peers, right? Everybody who takes N W A, if you meet that fifty percent, you've at least hit that average. Above that, you are, you know, we wanna be better than average.
But let me ask this, so when you say that, are you saying for the students to be at fifty percent, or for fifty percent of the students to be at their projected growth?
For fifty percent of the students to meet their projected.
When you said that, I thought you were saying something different.
Yeah.
So we literally are talking about for half the kids in K three to meet their projected growth. So if it's a hundred kids in K three, we're saying fifty of those kids would meet their projected growth. That's our goal.
And last year.
And that's where that struggle is.
Yeah, last year, K three, forty-eight, like point two, met that piece, right? And just so you know where I was coming from, it's like, okay, we gotta at least get to fifty and then keep going from there. But yes.
I hear you. I I I I I hear both sides of it, right? But I'm putting my parent hat on, and as a parent, I'm just like, that doesn't feel good to me, cause I'm like, who who is that fifty percent that doesn't meet projected growth?
And it doesn't feel good to me either, but I do also acknowledge, we have to look at our starting point. You know, like we can't go from forty-eight percent one year to, in a year, we're gonna be at seventy-five percent. So what what do we feel is a more, you know, if we're not, if we don't like fifty, what's um a number that's attainable, but you know, striving.
And I took the average, just to give you a little more.
Come in, I'll be.
But I think you've acknowledged, like, it would be, it would be a miracle from forty-eight to seventy-five or something.
But if you don't shoot, you don't, you know, like.
Right, but.
That's why I'm saying I can, I can step back and let everybody else talk about it, cause I'm a shoe high, that's me. But I understand.
But we could even, remember, if we're gonna go K twelve now, or pre-K twelve, right, we're gonna look at a district overall then scores, what I'm hearing. So when I just did the K three, I was like, okay, kindergarten was actually at a fifty-two point seven. First grade, fifty-four point three, second grade, thirty-eight point one. Gotta figure out what's going on that piece. So that's how averaging that K three at the forty-eight. If we're gonna go for a, you know, if we're looking at last year's district was for reading, um, was forty-nine point four.
So what do others think would be an attainable, I mean, yeah.
I know how slowly these things can.
Like returning the Titanic.
I would say that um sixty percent would be a reasonable goal.
I'm like, wow, I know, that would be awesome. I'm not just, I mean, I would be, yes, that's.
Absenteeism, cause that can cause issues too with the test. You know, people missing school and not there, that can be an issue as well.
So we do, if students are um absent, I wanna think, I mean, wanna say it's more than like, I don't call me on it fifteen days. I have to look, we have guidelines around that, right? So that if Jen is absent so many days, that her test score is not compiled.
Do we know what districts typically seen as successful around us are hitting as far as their numbers?
So N W A, from their, from their perspective, right? They're used to kind of, if you think of a bell curve, they're truly looking at that fifty percent, right? If you hit that fifty percent, right? You are doing, I'm gonna use the word average, if you go above that fifty percent.
Well, I I understand that, but I mean, if all the great schools are doing fifty-one and the poor's performing are doing forty-nine, that's still an average of fifty. But if they're doing seventy-five and twenty-five, that's also an average of fifty, so I'm just kinda looking like.
I haven't loo- I haven't, like, I don't know, I don't know if Ms. May, maybe you know, like, does one of Canton use N W A? Do they have a?
We um usually K five.
Okay.
Not K twelve.
Do you know what they said they were saying?
So we way above fifty. Yeah, so like, but we're, so we're averaging way above fifty, so that the pieces.
Got it. So it's just a different spot. Got you, okay.
So what is the state requirements? Is that the minimum? No, it would be, cause right here, thirty-five to seventy is, um, what we just read that? Thirty-five to seventy is.
Oh, you mean our district requirements. That's our district. So for each, everybody's evaluation, twenty, well, last year it was forty percent, but this year moving forward, twenty percent of their evaluation has to be student growth. So the way that we break it down is N W A is just a piece of that, right? So it's, and if you, it's literally seven and a half, seven and a half percent of their growth score for reading is seven and a half percent for math. Because then they take in, they're building M step scores as well. But the way they broke it down, so between thirty-one percent and seventy percent is students demonstrate active growth. Do I personally, Jen Curry, think thirty-one percent is way too low? Yes. And then anything at least seventy-one percent. And then anything at least seventy-one percent, if they demonstrate growth is, is highly effective. These terms, you probably all know too, will change too with the new evaluation. Um, there's no more highly effective. Um, and we just, us being currently in negotiations with our teachers, right? So this is part of the prohibitive subjects that are coming back, that we are all coming to the table around as we speak.
I would be interested in uh some other board members throwing out some numbers.
I just, I trouble arguing the number not without knowing, you know, what's, what's reasonable.
When I look at Jen, I'm sorry, when I looked at Jen expression, when you said sixty percent. And I feel like she's the expert here, you know, and Kim works in the field. And I feel like, I feel like what she feel like I should, even though I don't sit well with that fifty percent. But I can't change it. I'm not the teacher in the classroom, and you see what I'm saying? You guys are the experts. And I have to depend on you guys to tell me what you think is best.
I guess for my, cuz now that I'm, you know, we're thinking K twelve, I'm only going based on, you know, where we were at at the end of last year, right? So that's probably what, you know, so if I'm looking at the reading as a district, you know, we were forty-nine point fourteen percent. Do I expect growth? Absolutely. Are we gonna do all those things? Yes. But to say we're gonna grow eleven percent? It would be amazing, but.
So, I have a follow-up question, based on what you shared with this rubric, right? So last year, between thirty-one and seven, thirty-one percent and seventy percent of students demonstrating adequate growth on the N W E A. Assessment, a teacher was considered effective, right? Is that how I'm reading this?
So for that part of the growth piece, they got a three, yes. But then there was other pieces that played into that.
Right, okay. So, why aren't we, cuz this is locally determined. So less, so if the goal was sixty percent, right? This says between thirty-one and seventy percent, so if we're using that same language, you would still be identified as effective. I know that language is gonna change, but that was still, so when you talk about the evaluation piece, right, and how that impacts. Um, your evaluation, if we kept that same language wherever the teachers land.
Yeah.
Then I would like to see the goal be wherever this language lands. Does that make sense? So if the goal, so if we're saying, if, for example, it stays at thirty-one to seventy, if a teacher is between thirty-one and seventy percent of students. Demonstrating adequate grow- growth, meeting, yeah, so that they meet, they're, get the points, right, for being effective. Then why couldn't our goal be seventy percent? But if you land between thirty-one and seventy percent, then you're so effective. But our goal is still seventy percent. Does that make sense?
And I'll say, I I I must have misunderstood, said something earlier, I was thinking, we were saying she would have to get to that seventy percent to get effective.
Right, and I'm saying, no.
Okay, yeah, that, that actually seems a little more reasonable.
Yeah, but at least we're shooting for a goal that's way higher than a low goal of saying like. Cuz really, to me, it's almost like we're talking about adults and not kids, right? Like, we wanna make sure adults make their goal versus kids making their growth.
Yes.
That, that, that makes sense. That's what it feels like to me. So I would be comfortable with something like that, depending on seeing where we land with the teachers, and I understand that they're in negotiations now, so we kinda won't know that. Till we finish that part, but.
So I think, are, so then do we also, I'm gonna rework this too, so this is as a pre-K through, I'm gonna rework the goal. I'll rewrite it to align with what we read, but I'm wondering too, cuz we can either, I can do this to match this language. Um, because I did, because it says at least fifty percent, right, of K three students. And I still hope at least, I hear what you're saying, and yes, I wanna follow this, but I'm still hoping at least fifty percent make it.
I I I'm hoping at least seventy percent make it.
I I might.
Really, I, at least a hundred percent, but.
Seventy percent too. It it makes sense because it is in, up under a language in effective. You see what I'm saying?
And I can move this language right to.
Okay.
Yeah, where my brain just goes is that I'll just have, I'll craft it so it's still make, when I word the goal, remember I said I'm type A? So I'm just gonna, I'm trying to make it fit, but I will. But yes, I'm on the same page as you.
Yeah, that, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
We expected it, seventy percent.
So I'm gonna use the goal statement from the plan.
Well, we'll make a hundred, you know, our, our long-term goals, maybe not a year, we'll get.
Lack of sleeping hours, you know, as a kid, we used to wait till the weekend to stay up all night. We look, used to look forward to. These kids don't sleep at night. We, we live in this technology world, so what you think is taking up, is taking up the learning?
No, I I mean, though, like, from classroom to classroom, so much disparity. Are we talking building to building, or are we seeing a disparity within classrooms in the same building? That are that huge?
I don't think you see, I I'm gonna say you have outliers, is what I would say, right? You definitely have outliers. You're gonna see a lot of, you're gonna see a lot of that, at least fifty percent making it, right? But you do have those outliers where you're gonna see that, um, you know, Ms. Curry's room is, whether it's this year, hitting seventy percent. Or over and over. Um, sometimes it truly comes down to um interventions that the teachers giving within that classroom. It comes down to even sometimes.
The teachers and.
Yeah, relationships. Relationships, it comes down to you of, you're a brand-new teacher, and you're like, oh, like just kind of.
Achieve, you wanna be impressive.
There's a lot of factors that go in.
And are we doing a lot to find those outliers with the seventy percents and telling them, hey, we need to get you more involved with the other teachers?
So our principals are actually really, really good with that. So they um are digging through all of their building's data and then saying, okay, right, I see that. Um, in your classroom, right, consistently, your student growth is off the charts. So the teachers come together, what are you doing? How, what can I steal from your ideas, right, or what else can help?
It could be the teacher calling the parents, it could be, it could be.
It's a lot of things.
That, yeah, that, that social piece, that social piece go a long way, a long way.
Yeah.
It really does.
And so make sure we're leveraging those teachers that are getting those outliers.
Truly, right, whether you are, it doesn't matter what school you are at, you, every child is possible of meeting that seventy or eighty percent. It's just tapping, you know, just finding what works.
Whether you able to do it academically, or are you doing it because you trying to show up? Trying to be that social, you know, people, great job, you know, some kids live for that. Some adults tell me I'm doing a great job. You gonna see all smiles. She never tell me.
All right, I will re, let me rewrite this one to align with the um goal statement.
I mean, I am just so overwhelmed, I just wanna just say thank you.
You're welcome.
This is just to get the work done since I've been on this board. Thank you. I feel like I could take my shoes off and relax and everything. No tension, I'm serious.
Good, good, we're a good team.
Okay, so, moving us along, do we feel like? We are um good with our two goals at this point? So we have evidence for the first goal, evidence for the second goal will be N W E A scores.
Yep.
Um. We want attendance information as well, so would that be, do you guys want that as evidence in this goal? Like, cuz that will go along with where we are, how we got here. So that's the story, or do we need to set a goal around attendance, right? So we don't know what, do we know what the attendance rate is now?
I, I can get it for you, I don't have it off the top of my head. I know that, um, I thought at our last cross-department meeting, Mr. Bex- Bessick said. We had improved attendance, I wanna say it was by almost two percent, like one point eight. Um, don't quote me on that, but we were just talking about that last week at our department meeting.
So maybe the goal would just be around whatever we ended up, where we ended last year, and then seeing where we would wanna be this year. So like, if we ended at, I don't know, sixty-eight percent, then maybe this year we want it to be. I'll let somebody else pay, cuz you know me.
Absolutely.
And I can even pull that number to see.
We show can meet that seventy percent literacy. Uh, if it's sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-two percent.
I do have that in the first goal for attendance. Um, I'm wondering, I can link that in the first goal to either one.
Ah, so you have that as a, um, as a goal of evidence, the attendance piece.
I could, and I can add the ones with the student in there as well, I thought, I don't.
No, that makes sense. We can keep it there. You guys are okay with that, the measure being there for the attendance? Do you wanna go attached to that, or we're just looking at attendance?
I'm gonna do overall student attendance, especially if we do the report out.
Cuz we have a new tool to track it now, don't we?
Yeah, so that's that return of investment with that tool. So yeah, let's, let's set a goal.
Cuz it's many.
The last year's rate, maybe.
As many times as I went up to David Hicks, I never knew it was a currency issue. And the sad part about it is, a whole lot of the parents, that's, that kids go to David Hicks. I see them at different events in the community, and I was like, hey, you know, your child ain't been in school, what's going on? Or even, you know, not even identifying, I'd say, hey, is baby going to school, is everything all right? You know, not saying that they said the baby wasn't, cuz, you know, I know about confidentiality. But it's a whole lot of people that I see out in the community, city council meeting, church or whatever. That, you know, I can strike, hey, what's going on, is everything all right, you know? You need a ride or anything, you know, but I was just disappointed as much time as I spent at David Hicks and didn't know that information.
And I can also, we have a um district-wide attendance committee that ran all last year as well too. Um, and then principals are on that committee, and then Mr. Bessick leads that. I can connect with him, I'll get those, I'll get that actual number too. Where we left off last year.
Is there room for um, um, board member on that committee?
Yeah, I don't see why not, that would be great.
I'm coming for some of the committees that Fred's on, I wanna be on that discipling committee.
I can let Mr. Bessick know that too.
So when, when you do, um, you know, surveys and such for a community, um, I I would be interested to see. Um, how many parents have had to keep their kids? And I know, we know it's a hot, a high number, but how many parents had to keep their kids home for not having transportation?
Absolutely.
Yep.
We all subjectively know that it's a very high number right now, and I, but I would like to kind of get an idea of what that is.
Well, I know, not me, because I didn't wanna have the liability issues. But I have had people take the kids to school when our bus was, um, cuz I'm at the bus stop trying to recruit kids, you know? Like, when I go to the football games, I see kids and they, and I say, have you been to the football game yet? No, I can, can't go, I don't have no money, I don't have no transportation. So I take the kids to different football games, like I'm taking four of them from Wayne Memorial for the homecoming. And, um, so I'm at the bus stop, and I'm, I'm, I'm getting them to get rides with the other parents. Just because I'm a board member and I don't want the liability.
Right.
If I was just a neighborhood person, I wouldn't mind giving them a ride, as long as they have permission from their mom. But because who I am right now, I don't need that liability.
Right.
But yeah, so, but my question is, do they get marked attended, absent, or do they excuse?
We excuse them, yeah, so they know.
Even if the parent don't call and say they missed the bus.
If they're on that, if they are on a bus route that is being canceled, absolutely.
Oh, y'all so smart.
Yeah, so we put that as what's called like a documented absent, right, cuz that's on us, like we, that's our, that is our.
But, at the end of the day, and excuse that, this is still a day you're not in the seat getting education.
Agreed.
And it's, yeah.
Cuz it already has been twenty-eight cancellations. Twenty-eight cancellations.
And I do wanna clarify that, this is a much broader-reaching issue than ours. I'm still in my uh, community Facebook pages from when I lived in Lebanon. And they're all complaining about it over in Lebanon too, that it's, it's our district, every district around us, whether we're privatized busing, public busing. It's everybody right now is dealing with that.
We have, I think it's six or seven, I think, driver openings, seven driver openings, a router opening.
It's six, um, positions on the, um, website.
Yep, and I know, um, Chad, um, Mr. Kendrick, the director, just even put out, he shared with our core team of. Okay, so if Route twelve is canceled, this is the other route that will pick it up, right?
Yeah, but I think that's great.
Um, yeah, they're truly doing everything they can do. It's just a matter of, I was even joking, when we, they, as they're hiring new teachers. I was like, hey, can you also drive a bus? But, right, um, I'm just trying to really think outside of the box of how.
Well, Jen, I did a training in the district, and the superintendent drives the bus.
Yes, he does.
Like the, the team that drives the bus. I'd be like, what time you got today?
It was, it was on the news, it was on the news and everything, the secretary driving the bus.
Yes, we're all gonna drive a bus.
And Kim, Kim up.
I mean, I like learning new things.
Parents driving the bus, the community person.
Okay, so I'm a move bus.
Yes, yep.
Can we, so I feel like we're in a good place with goals, and everyone comfortable with the goals?
I am.
Yeah.
All right, so let's take a look at the rubric. This shouldn't take us as long. Um, and the reason why I'm taking us to the rubric is because this is another piece in which, um, Jen would provide evidence. To demonstrate effectiveness, and so there are five categories to the rubric. Looking at page four, the first one is under governance and board relations, and then there are six subcommittees under that. And I, or I'm sorry, subcomponents. And I feel like we should go through the rubric and at least identify pieces of evidence. So that Jen knows this in advance, cuz she doesn't, I don't think she would necessarily have to demonstrate effectiveness with all of these pieces. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? So, um, the five or six subcomponents under governance and board relations, and I'm just reading this into record for the public. So there's policy involvement, goal development, information, materials and background, board questions. And then board development. And so in this area, a superintendent can be rated as needing support, developing, or effective. And so if we're looking in, on, under each subcomponent, under the categories of effective. What would we like to see Jen present to demonstrate effectiveness under governance and board relations?
Well, this one's a little hard because it's almost like easier to go the other way around. I mean, with board questions, it's easier to present evidence. If a superintendent's not answering questions, then, you know, if she's presenting questions, that kind of speaks for itself, you know? We know if she's answered our questions or not. But yeah, I mean, it, that's kind of a hard one, because memos of communication, sure, you can provide that as evidence, but. Just because you provide that I responded to these three emails doesn't mean you didn't respond to these three emails.
So, one thing that I, I would like, that maybe we could add, well, it's here, so it talks about agendas and minute, meeting agendas and minutes. And we've talked about this in the past, but having a space on our agenda to answer follow, to do the follow-up. So when we ask questions during our recommendation, or at any point during the board meeting. Um, where we have a space at the, maybe during the superintendent comments or remarks, those questions are then answered. And then that would serve as minutes. You know, would serve as evidence, right? And those questions are then also answered for the public to hear the answers as well.
Right.
So do you see that both as kind of like a follow-up with the weekly updates and then follow-up at the meeting as well too?
Yeah, yeah, if, I mean, if a question was asked in public, it should probably be answered in public.
Yeah, it should be answered in public, because that's the biggest thing, like. Like, um, Miss, like, one of our community people, I'm not gonna say her name. She asked a couple of questions last night, so when do we answer those questions?
Okay, that's, so you're, okay, that, that helps, Carrie, so you're thinking both, board and community.
But specifically here, we're talking about governments' board relationships, but yeah, I agree with both.
Right, yeah.
So, this might be a really crazy idea, but I'm trying to think too, cuz there's a month in between meetings, right? So I don't know if this is appropriate or not appropriate, but I also even see like a ongoing, I don't wanna call it F A Q. But an ongoing, like, questions asked at the board meeting by community members and answers. And then that is that something that we just put out to everybody?
I like that.
You know, because I don't, not, I'm open. You know, because I don't, not, I'm open to it, but also it's like a month in between. So if Miss Sample has a question, right, and I want her to feel like she's gotta wait a month to get her answer. Where if we started something like that, it could just be even like me working with our communications department meeting, but. It could truly be, you know, I'm wondering X, Y, and Z, um, and it could be maybe just, um. I don't know, questions asked by the community at the board meeting, questions and answers.
And, and I do get that there are some questions asked by the community that are very specific to that person, and they may not apply to everybody, but a lot of these questions are. Yeah, a lot of times, these are questions that apply to the whole community, and, you know, if one person's asking it, or twelve people in a meeting. There's probably a lot more people that want that answer too. So yeah, we're talking about board relations here, but I think it does apply to.
Yeah, cause you know, like at a council meeting or something like that. They answered the questions from the community through email, so they will email them. You know, cause you know, you don't have, sometimes you don't have the answer right now, so they will email them. But you know, we not trying to put more work, but somehow, those questions need to be answered, and they don't, don't need to take a month.
And sometimes we'll even like have the principal reach out, like if it's for a school, extended, we would, whenever we would say, hey, can you please call?
Right, right, right.
I'm open to whatever, I just.
Uh, yeah, I would say, obviously, I'm sure you do have, you know, for specific situations, reach out before those questions. Well, for the questions for the board, I would definitely say, we would like those to be answered publicly at the next meeting. That doesn't mean, don't also answer them to us privately first, you know, if you can get us the question, answer it the next day, get it to us, sure. But then also address it publicly at the meeting.
Okay.
Um, but then, and this is jumping ahead to one other community, yeah, if it's a question that is applicable to the whole community. Also, maybe send something out, you know, or, like, send an FAQ or.
Okay, okay.
And, um, as far as the board, the one thing that I have been hearing since I've been on the board. That you can't know this, cause it's confidential, we have to protect confidentiality. And, and my thing is, we are the board of education. I mean, if you can't share with me, and I'm the supervisor's supervisor, who can you share with?
Also, if.
We, we was sworn in, as where I don't believe that your, um, staff was sworn in, right? We had to take the oath of this office, well, before we started, so of course we know about confidentiality.
So do you, I, I like the idea of the follow-up, I guess sometimes the timing is off in the board meetings, so let's say if it was, uh. I think we just had to, if there's time, like even before, cause my comments come at the end, right, so if there is follow-up, then.
So I think the weekly updates that you're seeing, answering in there is fine.
Okay.
But then also, including that in your remarks at the next board meeting, so that is answered publicly.
Even if it's a follow-up to maybe more of the information needed, like before a vote? I guess that's where it's. Like, let's say if it was, um, wanting to more, more questions, like if it was at the finance committee, right, and we need some more follow-up. Well, that wouldn't come then till the end of the board meeting at the comments.
Right, so then that would, to me though, that would come in your weekly update.
Yeah.
So, cause the board meeting is on Thursday, you know what I mean, so then that would come in the weekly update to say like, hey, th- these questions were raised.
Okay.
Right, from finance, and then here's the answers.
So that stays status quo.
Right, but then you can also answer them with that applicable item before we vote on it too.
Got it, okay.
I, I must say, I, I have them all printed, I love your weekly updates, I have started a notebook of them. Just because I like to go back and forth, you know, as myself, as the way I learn.
Yeah.
You know?
And let me know too, if there's anything like different information, more information, I'm trying to really frame it, it's like, what do you really, what do you guys need to know? Right, not that you don't wanna know everything, but what do you need to know?
I, I've kind of always put it as, um, if it's something you think there's a decent chance we're gonna be asked about it, it's a good idea. And that includes, I mean, yeah, if there's.
Yeah.
Like, obviously, like with the jungle and homecoming game, something that's gonna be a hot button issue, or just something that. Yeah, anything that you think reasonably we're going to be asked about, we probably won't know.
So, I'ma bring this up ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you could do that, just so we're all on the same page, so I'm clear too.
Yeah, I was bringing it back, so I, I have that meeting agendas and minutes would serve as evidence. Memos slash communications, and I listed under that weekly updates. Was there anything else, um, that, cause this talks about policy involvement here? So would that still serve as meeting agendas and minutes, right, being present at?
Policy committee.
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, so are we good with A?
Oh, let me, can I just say one more thing? Cause even if it's just known now, that if the community have a question or a comment, and they need me wanna answer. You could just, we can let them know, it can be in our board package, the answers will be asked at next meeting. If you feel like it's the emergency answer that you need, give me your email.
Yes, and I've been taking those sheets too.
And that's the whole idea of the jet, so utilize them.
Right, and sometimes I call, sometimes I'll say, hey, you're over this, you call.
Great.
I think what might happen too, though, what I could do, so it doesn't get lost, is I could give you. This just made me think of two, so we take the sheets, I then either call or distribute people to call, but then we could even write and then give you them back if you wanted to. Like, hey, here's what was sent, so then we kinda keep it, like who called who.
Oh, okay, so that very nicely moves us into B. B is community relations, that is on page six. Community relations, there are five components or subcomponents, so there, um, is communication with community parents. Community parent input, media relations, district image, and then approachability. And so I just heard around communications, right, so evidence of that, and so that would maybe be. Again, those sheets and then how that was responded, so what you were just talking about, creating something to go with that, so that would be one form of evidence. Um, I heard about the surveys, we've talked about surveys as a form of evidence, so would that fall under here as well? So not just the surveys, but the, um, results and the, um.
And then what we did with.
Yes, the follow-up, thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'd like to, I know that it's not, it's under district image. I'd like to see, it's been a long time since we've had any marketing done. I mean, we had billboards on I ninety-four for a little while. But, you know, this is back to embarrassing days, when we had great futures start right here, you know? And, and that's fine, and it's, it's all good, but, um, maybe we need to consider refreshing up. You know, to.
Like a rebranding?
Put out to the public, you know, maybe we need a new jingle.
Who is it, Jenny Johnson, she, in her email that she sent us, it says, live.
Live, learn, grow?
Yeah, yeah, I liked it that, I actually say, oh, I actually say, oh, you came up with something. And I say, you came up with something, then I see who it was from, and I was like.
There's like little things that just, as I go through, I'm like, yeah, I wouldn't really say that, like I would say this instead, like I'm just trying to be more of like. Jen Curry kind of thing.
Absolutely, own it, own it.
But yeah, that's right.
So that would fall under, um, maybe press releases or news clips, you think, is that what you're thinking, Fred? Or how, or, it doesn't have to fall there, we can name it, we can identify it.
I, I just noticed district image, and image is advertising, new logo, new, new jingle.
Something fresh.
Something very fresh.
Well, then we had to think about down the line, you talking about a lot of things, when you talk about. We have flags, we have tablecloths, we have, um. Um, display boards, you know, you talking about a whole lot of things, when you talking about even changing the great futures. So we had to start with something small, cause right now, we don't have the funds.
I respectfully disagree with that, um.
What, the funds or?
You know, our last, our last freshen up cost us. I believe it was somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand dollars total, uh, for the company that we used.
And which year was that?
Uh, that, that's back to embarrassing days, so it's been a, a long time.
Yeah.
Well, and I even think our, our communications department and our, um, print shop and our, I think they could probably even do a lot of.
Yeah, a lot more in-house.
Since we come up with these ideas, right, cause we have really good people, like between our graphic designers and things like that.
So what would be evidence of that? I just, I wanna keep us, so I'm not, I just wanna keep us, like, how would you wanna see that in evidence, would that just be?
That would be, you know.
A board, a, a board presentation of, um, um, you know, how that's working. If we did get a new jingle, play it for the community. Um, if we did have a new logo, start using that on our TVs, you see the one we've had forever.
So ultimately, you would like to see a new logo? Is that what I'm hearing? I just wanna make sure it's clear, so that Jen knows the direction and we're not.
No, I mean, if you're gonna freshen it up, then do it all the way.
Okay, so and I.
The only thing about that is, like I'm saying, is the cost of it. And not that I'm, I don't mean to offend you or nothing like that, Jen, but you know, we haven't decided about a superintendent. We haven't decided about moving on, so if we change everything for, based on this administration. And then say she don't want the job, we offer, if we don't offer her the job, you see what I'm saying? The next administration gonna come in, you know, like they say, every, every four years, the White House get rechanged. You see what I'm saying, or something like that, we don't have that balance.
And I, I think, I, I see this section as more of a, you know, like you're a positive image, you're engaging.
Okay.
I see that, I see it from that lens, I think you, you know, if it's a board, if we, if it was still decided to, you know, go with, uh. Live or grow, truly, I was, it literally just was something that we came up with, not necessarily a whole rebranding thing. But I think it could kinda go, I, I look at them as two different things, right? I mean, it is my job every time I'm out in public, which I do love the district to project a positive image, right? Um, so I think it could easily go with it, but I think it's kind of like, do you take that project on with it, or?
Advertising is. I, I explain it this way, you throw it away, you throw it away, you throw it away, and then. As you're walking to the door to get your mail, your refrigerator heaves its last breath. And here in the mail is advertisement where you can get a new refrigerator at a great discount. Okay, so, uh, needs certainly drive some of that. But, um. I think it's a, uh, I think it's a valuable point, uh, not every superintendent is gonna change it. As evidenced by the five, six, or seven we've had since Barysy. They never saw the need to change it or freshen it up.
I guess my only, I'm not saying no, my only hesitant right now is I think that people, um, are breathing a little bit, right? Nothing new, nothing shiny, let's just, right, like figure out kinda where we are, let's stabilize before we do something again. But that's just my, that's what my gut tells me. I'm not saying no, not, you know, but to right now, just kinda steady the, steady the course.
Uh, like, it's like you said, technology department, whoever department, whether it's Nick Appleby, whoever. You know, we have people who can make a logo. I mean, you know, it just, it doesn't need to be blown out of the water.
So maybe a happy medium with that is, um. Like we have a, a district logo, right, like that's like, so like the WW is kind of the, the logo right now, right? And instead of maybe changing the logo, maybe it's a theme for every year. And maybe we can then, we can still have a logo, go with the theme, and we can utilize our students in the graphic design program.
Yes.
And maybe do some type of contests for our theme for each year, and then move into changing the logo. But maybe this year we start with a theme, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to find a happy medium, cause I think that's a, that's a heavy lift.
And I think, Dr. Weaver, with your point, you could still do a.
Have to disagree with it, this is example right in front of us. This logo is from the sixties, and maybe earlier. And it wasn't changed until this, which I would agree would, was much nicer. I'm, I'm just saying, I think that we're putting too much into it with the money issue. Because a lot of this work, we have, we have employees that could do it.
So you're thinking rebranding, like I think of theme different than rebranding, so you're thinking about rebranding.
I'm thinking of a, a rebranding, and in terms of, and even community involvement. What do people surrounding districts, um, what, when they think of Wayne Westland, what do they see?
May I ask this question, um, so I think that conversation, and I don't disagree with you, Dr. Weaver, but I don't think that conversation goes with the. This, this meeting, the evaluation meeting, I think that's a different conversation, cause we can, we definitely need to talk about it and unpack it, right? I don't think that is, I don't necessarily think, like that's a goal to me, that doesn't fit with this rubric. To say like, hey, in order for you to be effective, you need a rebrand. That's just me, but I don't know how other board members feel, Jen, I don't know how you feel about that?
I agree, I think our, but I think, um, Dr. Weaver, to your point. I think that I could still work with our communications department to gather ideas around exactly what you said.
Yes.
I, I think I like his idea, and I think I liked it more when he said getting the parents and the community involved. You know, shoot it out there, what would you like, have even have a contest, you know, get them involved.
We may even have a parent that would come up with a killer logo.
Yeah, or even like I think of our students over at Career Tech Center, right, they probably would have great ideas, yeah.
It's just a thought, if it doesn't fit with the rubric, that's fine, but I think it needs to be.
It is something.
I think it needs to be considered.
And I wasn't saying not to consider it, I was just saying, in this piece of it, it didn't necessarily.
Okay.
Fit in terms of, cause we're talking about evidence for her to bring, and I don't know that we want, and I don't know, maybe I'm off in my thinking on that, I don't know. Cause this is consensus, it's not Kimberly, so.
But I think it's a good idea, especially all that we've been through, I think, I think, I think it's a good job, I think it's a good idea. Maybe Fred can start another committee.
No.
Well, it has to be a committee, somebody has to do the work.
Mrs. Johnson, actually, she probably would really be excited to really look at that and kinda think what, would that look like, for sure.
I'm sure Ms. Michelle will be happy to.
We gotta bring you into every conversation, but sample. Um, I, I did have one more I wanted to add, um, and it, it's, if this could go into, the evidence for this would be again, agendas and minutes. Well, not agendas as much, but more minutes, um, when we do have the community comments. A lot of times, it does kinda feel like the community is talking at us, and, and sure, we may not answer till the next week. And we did talk about, you know, answering at the next meeting, having those answers. But also, those community comments come before the superintendent's comments, and sometimes there have been questions asked by twenty people up there. That I know, whoever's sitting in this chair, has the answer at the top of their tongue, and then the, and I'm not saying you. Then the superintendent comments come and go, and nothing gets addressed. If it's something that's, a bunch of, that people are asking there, that you know the answer to, address it in that meeting. I mean, there's no reason not to, there's no reason to wait for an email, there's no reason to wait till the next meeting, just answer the question that night.
That, that would be great, I like efficiency too, so that would be great, right?
Or, if it's something you know one of your staff has that answer right there, empower them to say like, hey, give me that answer and I'll address it.
Okay, perfect.
So what I have under community relations for evidence is the survey data and the follow-up. I have, um, meeting invitations and agendas, well, community meetings and agendas, so that piece, cause you talked about having those engagement meetings. So that will go there, as well as board meeting minutes, that would demonstrate you answering community questions. Um, what we talked about in terms of answering those questions, and then, um, a calendar for the meetings that you would have. That could be a, a piece of evidence, and then, um, any communications with families. Does that resonate with everybody?
The only other thing I would like to add is community relationships and, um, partners. Is because Wayne Westland, Service School of Choice. Inkster, Bromley's, Dearborn Heights, Canton, what I. Inkster, Bromley's, Dearborn Heights, Canton, what are those connections in those different cities? That the superintendent is making, you know?
So what would that evidence be?
Sometimes the, this can be a phone call or email, just like you said, but you know, it could be inviting the mayor. Or city council to, um, our school for a meeting, if they don't come, you did it.
So meeting invitation?
Me, meeting invitations, um, different events in the school district invitations, you know? You can invite them to do a tour of the, um, Career Tech. Invitations, yes.
Got it, okay, yeah.
Okay, so moving us to C. C is around staff relations, and again, there are seven components, subcomponents here, staff input, staff communications. Personnel matters, delegation of duties, recruitment, labor relations, and visibility in the district. And then what are some evidence or artifacts that would serve as evidence?
I'd like to see a, uh, teacher's contract with a school calendar.
You're gonna see a principal one next month.
But yeah, I mean, obviously, negotiation documentation's on here, and that's, we are in negotiations right now, so con, new contracts would be evidence. A new art, would be artifact.
Anyone else?
I think survey data, like suggested here, I think surveys, survey data would be good. And hiring process documentation, oh, um, that, and I, I guess this would work as artifacts, but, um. More information when we're being asked to approve a hiring decision around, um, you know, if somebody. If, I, I know, like, we do a collective bargaining agreements, people are on different steps, everything, but if, you know, if somebody's being brought in at a higher step. Or being brought in somewhere else, you know, the actual information on that, obviously, it might have to be.
Do they get individual contracts when they're hired, Jen? How, what do they sign, is it an offer letter, what is it?
Yeah, well, so, yes, so if you're hired, and I'm just gonna use the supervisors, right? So they are per the Wacoa contract, if I'm offering you a position based on your experience, I might say, okay, I'm offering you step two of grade thirteen. Um, and then depending on where they're at, it's with, they might say then, between them and Dr. O'Feely. Then negotiate individually for like a different step or something.
So what we would like to see, so we get their, their, um, beta, right? But under separate cover, we would like to see either their offer letter or their, um, contract. So whatever it is that demonstrates, or that, yes, that demonstrates their salary.
So, yeah, so just to clarify, so they get that initial offer letter, but if they negotiate a different step, do they get another letter saying like, this is what we agreed upon? Okay, then that's that.
Okay, you want like the final, yes, gotcha, okay.
Okay, cuz before y'all answered that question, my question was, cuz I never understood, because we don't get that, if we have asked for it. What's our purpose? And you know, saying that we approved the hire, most of the time, me and Fred both required that, you know. That they don't even start until after we have that information. Cuz we work on them, and sometimes they already started, you know, we approving the hire. It would be, if we can't get that information, it would be better for us just to walk, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I was even thinking, you know, even last night, I think with our, you know, we had three brand new, um, supervisors come to the district, right? And that, one thing I was even thinking during, um, but as I'm learning this role too, I didn't wanna interrupt. Is that those roles used to be directors, right, and you wouldn't have had that background, that they were directors. And now they are supervisors, and I think that would have been something really important when I, you know, when we reflected today and I spoke. Um, to the team about that, just to share those little tidbits, right, so people know that.
That's why I said everybody's a supervisor, but then I didn't know until I was walking out, and somebody told me. That is, um, elementary, middle, and high school level, I didn't know that neither.
And I like the, um, I kinda work in like who's the audience, so I think when Kimberly, you had said, hey, you know, just. The audience is always, you know, community and parents, that really hones in for me, cuz I think it just changes our semantics, our language, everything. So, yeah.
I'm, I'm really waiting to meet this new principal that's doing half here and half there.
I'm sorry. Do we want, um, sorry, I'm like, I said we could keep this meeting to an hour and a half, and we are way over that, so I was trying to get it together. Are there any other pieces that we would like to see in terms of, um, cuz some of this stuff overlaps. So just understanding that, right, it'll fit in a couple of different areas. Um, perhaps maybe a school visit calendar that just kinda, you know, shows that piece.
And, and just to clarify, these are the things requested, you're allowed to bring other of it.
I, right, and I am comfortable to, um, I know, um, Mr. Gray has it. I'm even open just to sharing my calendar, I mean, sometimes that's just easier, I, I use Google Calendar and. That's just an idea too. But, I mean, I'm also happy to create a list too, though, but you could be like, hey.
And I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said this, Jen, as we're saying these things, please chime in to say like, oh no, I would like to present this, you know what I mean? So I, I apologize, I didn't say that.
Good, I'm good with, I'm good with it all.
Okay, so D is.
This is in finance.
Yes, so we have five categories here, budget development and management, budget reports, financial controls, facility management. Resource allocation, so we can kinda talk about what are some of the things that we would like to see, Jen, if there are some things that you would. Identify on here, you wanna add to this, please do, and I'm just checking them off so that I'm keeping track.
Agendas and minutes, cuz I wanna see on there that we've been having, you know, frequent report, you know, reporting to the board. Obviously, auditors report the district's budget, we definitely wanna see those. Budget related communication, yeah, emails.
I'd just say transparency and honestly, you know, if, if it's a issue, let us know it's a issue.
So the long-term financial forecast data would be nice, and then, um, I would even like to see evidence of budgetary alignment to district Y goal. So that's that return on investment piece.
Yeah, you know, I, I was thinking about that too, is I, I would like to see more of a, of a push towards when we receive. You know, our finance packets and it's, you know, there's a, the memo in there requesting funding. Um, a little blurb in those from people that says, you know, like, how's this affecting students? Because everything affects students, I mean, even the salt truck affects students, and make sure that our sidewalks are safe for our students. And I know some of it's going to seem obvious, but I would still like to see something on that, cuz I think it would just help. Keep focused on that all of these purchases, um, you know, are, are in service of the stu, of the students.
Would it be easier to align it with the strategic plan? So people say like, so when you say that little blurb, where they're saying like, yep, just that simple, it leads to this goal.
That's, cuz like right on there, it could be, um, strategical or strategic plan goal, and it's just listed right under there.
So what's strategic plan goal with a salt truck?
I'd like to.
Because I think, uh, they, they all do align with A Street, you know? And I know, so again, like I said, I know some of them are gonna be obvious, but I think it would just be, not official have that on there, just to remind ourselves, that's what we're doing with this money.
Um, I would like to see more pre-planning in, um, in the. Things that we spend money on, for example. Um, if we were, uh, not going to have this meeting tonight, we would have had. No leeway at all in our defeasance plan, because we're backed up to the minute. And so, um, I know that you're not a genie with the lamp. And, uh, and all that kinda thing, but if we could not feel so backed up. Into, hey, we gotta vote this in tonight, or we're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, I promise that will never happen, but for ninety-nine percent of the time, a hundred percent, I'm with you, right? I think some of those, like, with the situation with the state aid loan, with the, um, last, like with the, hey, you can, you know, you've now got this grant. There's gonna, I also just wanna be open and honest and say there's gonna still, that might still happen a couple of times, right? Of like, hey, we just got this grant, or hey, we now no longer.
Well, a couple of times is different than all the time, and right now, it's all the time.
No, but right now, we have to do all these things just because of things that have happened.
I will say it's gotten better, because I don't remember at my first meeting, I, you know, pushed back on the idea that we have that, uh, we kind of were forced to vote on. This system we use, the K, K twelve, the system we use for field trip approvals or whatever, and then I questioned a couple of months ago, why are we voting on this again already? And was told, well, last time you said you didn't want it at the last minute, so, okay, there we are, that's nice.
We didn't get the follow-up to that either, the implementation for the case whoa, cuz remember there were some questions about implementation.
Right, I did send the, I sent it in the board updates, there was a whole like, um.
I'll go back and look, I must have missed it, I apologize.
It's like a, kinda looks like a power, PowerPoint, but it gives like, you know, all the updates, how much we use it, all of those kinds of things, yeah.
And also, you know, like, we, like, we are, um, wanting to contract and selling, uh, old devices. You know, and for them to just have one company, did they, did they contact another company, you know, another estimate maybe?
Yeah, I thought that, um, Mr. Weaver shared that they did, did they say they had like three holes in it, right? But to your point, like to have that, like with, uh, here, with that information.
Just to share, um, there are a lot of things that the district purchases. That has to go out for RFP before, uh, before we can, it even comes to the board.
I know.
Well, I, I'm just trying to, to say that it would be very little, I would think, that would come to the board. For any major expenses that didn't go out for some kind of.
But that wasn't an expense in that case, so they didn't necessarily have to do a RFP, cuz that was us, they were charging us the two percent. But we were really getting money back, speaking of that, really quick, I think it was mentioned that, that those funds would go into the general fund. Um, that we received, and I know we purchased a lot of devices through grants. So, I don't know that that's accurate, I think it has to go to the grants.
To go back to where they came from.
And just to clarify, though, some of our purchases that we make, we do go through, like we have approved vendors, right, that are guaranteed that these are the lowest through. What is it, RISA, or, okay. They usually tell us that, that these are one of those vendors, so.
Right, and she did in others, but she didn't in that one, cuz that's.
But to your point too, I think it's, it's always good just to share it, just as if, you know, those of us are, know all this, but there's still gonna be other people who don't. Yeah, they were like, literally take like thirty seconds.
Are we comfortable with the evidence for D? Okay, so we'll move to E, under instructional leadership, and for that one, there are seven subcomponents, performance evaluation system. Building level leadership, staff development, school improvement, curriculum, instruction, student voice. Um, oh, I'm sorry, there are nine, support for students, and then professional knowledge. And so there are lists of artifacts here, um.
Do we have a list anywhere of the last time we did full overhauls of curriculum for different subjects grades?
Yep, we, so we've had, uh, um, full curriculum adoption cycle over the past couple of years, so like it's, um, I can share that as well too. Of like what came when, or when we have, um, I think one of the biggest, uh, I'm gonna say misunderstandings of curriculum, right? So define curriculum as our, our standards, right, our standards are curriculum, and then we buy the resources to meet that. So I think it's a twofold, cuz I know you'll hear a lot of people say, we don't have curriculum, we do have curriculum, those are our standards, right? So and then we go from the resources, and I, you know, even from all the years I've even been in the district, depending on how you taught. You know, you'll hear people say, we haven't had curriculum in ten years, oh, you, you have, you have your. Right, so yes, to your point, is I think it would be a both of when truly of, you know, where, where is each team at with prioritizing their standards? Across all grades, and then who's gotten resources when, and sometimes too, it's a matter of ELA at the high school, I'll use an example. They, you know, one year they might have purchased, I don't know, ten different texts to use within the classrooms, right? So when you, depending on who you speak to, they might be like, well, we didn't get new curriculum, they got a new resource to help the curriculum.
Are we, are we behind on refreshing any of that?
Yes, so there's still some pockets at the high school, I don't know if we're saying we're, we're behind, but just a matter of we truly prioritize your standards. Right, and then we're gonna go from there first, um, because I, I don't, I can't, I'm not gonna just say. And not that I don't trust you, but these books might be great, but show me the alignment, right, with your standards, and then we'll purchase them.
Yeah, and behind, I mean, like behind where, in an ideal world, you wish we were, we were with some, some.
Yes, I do, especially cuz we did pause a few things last year, um, for right and wrong, meaning that. Not wrong, but cuz of the finance situation, but then also, right, which we did get pushback, which I'll own, is we want the teams to prioritize your standards. We want you to do that work in alignment to get both of our high schools, both of, all of our middle schools. So that's truly, if you're in a sixth grade classroom, no matter what building you're at, or an eleventh grade class, and which one, you're gonna have the same resources and same teaching. So, but I can share with you what we have.
Yeah, I would say, I would love to see a curriculum cycle. Fred, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, uh, under student voice, um. I, I would like to see, and, and we understand as a board, a lot of these things are farmed out. Um, to, uh, committees or, or whatever the case may be. But, um, you know, I would, I would like to hear from our underperforming students. What would engage them? What, is there anything we can do to engage you? Uh, I don't, I don't know how that would work, or how that would look. But, um, certainly a principal or assistant principal could accomplish that. With inviting students to a meeting during the school day, or whatever the case may be. So, yeah, that specific question, what can we do to engage you? You're not engaged right now, what can we do?
Maybe that can be a committee. I mean, I'm, I mean, I mean, where, where would we get them from? You had to recruit them, or maybe they counselor could refer them some, to a group or something, right here in the same building, you know?
I would love for us.
I thought you were giving Fred this committee. That's why I thought you were going with that, no.
I would love for us to add a student to our board chair, I, I, I would love to have, to have a seat here for a student.
Districts that have done that, right, so not voting up lessing seat, but.
That's what I would love to see us do.
I don't hate that idea.
I thought we were supposed to did something like that early, remember we had, we had like a, a student board member, like some years, a couple of years ago? We were supposed to did that.
Never since I've been on the board, but maybe.
Yeah, I think they, those, they just never followed through, they started, but then never like.
And then, like M A S B has guidelines and stuff to help set that up, so I would love to see us do something like that.
That would be fantastic, yeah.
So when we look at this for artifacts, um, so I hear like, maybe even Fred, what you're talking about could be a part of a survey, right? And that could be the question on the student survey, what can we do to engage you, I don't know, or listening circles. But I, we would just want to see some way in which you've included student voice, right, Fred, like, is that what you?
I think that it needs to go a little deeper than that.
Okay, so I'm, I, I guess what I'm asking is just what evidence would you?
What evidence?
Yeah.
That an assistant principal sat down with ten students. Or five students that were underperforming and say, this is, you know, this is not attacking you in any way. I honestly want to know what we can do to make school good for you.
Dr. Weaver, do you think that could also be part, you know, we talked about creating what they're gonna share out from like, you know, attendance to achievement to, right? So then what are you doing to increase those, that could be part of that too, that they share out? This is, I'm thinking about that.
Yeah, just so, eh, eh, to me, it's another way to recapture some students.
I like it, it's a great idea. Um, so, I, we talked about a curriculum cycle, um. I, I'm curious to go along with that curriculum cycle is a curriculum audit, right? So like you've talked about those standards and that alignment, so just seeing evidence of, of that work being done. Um, so I, I would like to see that. Um, we talked a little too at the last meeting about coaches and how we're funding coaches and so. coaches, and so we shifted some of that from thirty-one A to, I can't remember what it was now. I felt like it was.
Twenty-three G.
Yeah, twenty-three G. So, I know there, I believe there's a program audit that goes with twenty-three G or a program evaluation, so maybe that piece would be nice to just see, um.
We also, um, we do program evaluations on anything, like, you know, biggest purchases through any of our grants. So I could even share those as well.
Okay, I think those would be, again, that kind of supports that return on investments?
Yeah.
To, to have that, because we talked about, we wanna know if it's working, if it's not working, so that could fall into that.
Can I follow up on your curriculum audit? Um, when we talk about, you know, the, the resources and the resource refresh, um, I would like to see, you know, it costs it out of what it would cost to get us to where you think we should be with that stuff. Even if it's, we don't think we financially can do it right now, I would like to know how much would it cost to do it? Because like I said earlier, you know, I kind of think we should treat our student achievement now like we've treated this financial crisis, you know, over the last year. So if it is a priority of ours, even if financially we look at and say, hey, this is a lot, we can then at least look at, well, where can we trim otherwise to make this happen?
Absolutely, or if we find some money, then we know we already have a list.
Well, you know, make, make a wish list, basically. Yep, make a wish list. This is, yeah, we'd like to see that.
Yeah, okay.
And I think too, to support the tier one piece with that goal would be, um, an instructional audit. Because I think that those conversations are already happening when you talk about tier one instruction. So just that, um, evidence of that would, would fall into there.
Just for clarity too, have you, in the past couple of years, been walked through the whole curriculum adapt, like, cycle, what's coming up, what's coming?
No.
Are you, so you know you didn't have that in secret?
Or has it been passed?
I don't even hear two years.
Emailed? Okay, okay.
And the staff development plan, I think that would be nice to see as well, because that would then coincide to support the goal that we talked about, but this is all under that instructional leadership piece. Um, and I think too, to lift what Fred is talking about in terms of our students that are struggling, that's, um, evidence around the RTI and TSS process. Like what that actually looks like from beginning to end for a student.
And we even have, which is good, I can even sure that we have that broken down by building, so I can even share that.
So that is the rubric, if everybody's good with that. So, the next steps are, eh, one question we'll, we'll need to answer for Jen is, how do we want to receive that data at the end, right, that we, those artifacts? Do we want her to link things, like if she, um, has the rubric electronically to link those things to match with each component? Um, or Jen, do you have an idea of how you wanted to present that?
So I have, um, we have this in, um, I think it's a P, like a fillable form. So, I would love to be able to just include the links. Um, and then what I could do is depending on if it updates every time, or if not, if I just reshare it, you know, or, or send it, um, via email every time, um, then we could, if you wanted a hard copy, we could still print you out the whole packet, or you could just go through, depending on your learning style, and look at the pieces. So I would like to kind of just start like a working one.
Okay, and I think, to, for all fairness, like you'll have the opportunity through the process to complete a rubric yourself, to do your self-evaluation. And so when you complete the self-evaluation, is when you would give us the evidence as well. So when you give us your self-evaluation, and then your evidence will go with that. So you don't have to do that throughout the process, right?
Okay.
But you may wanna bring, when we go to mid, not just mid-year, but those informational ones, and you don't necessarily have to bring evidence for those. It can just be the conversation.
Yeah, and I'll probably, that sounds great, I'll probably just already start to build it, so then when we get to those meeting spots, right? I can then just say, hey, here's what I have so far, and if we want hard copies, to go through them, or whatever that looks like, or I could even pull it up on the screen and so forth. That, that definitely works.
But thank you for offering that about linking and hard copies for those of us who want it, because it's a nice acknowledge that people have different learning styles. I know, I like everything digitally, and I know a lot of people don't.
Okay, so we're good with that. So the other piece is setting the dates for the follow-ups. So what happens is, we've, we had our, we, this is our orig-, our, ugh, I can't even talk, our, um, initial. So then we need to set up an informal, um, and so honestly, our cycle was a little different, so we're a little behind. So to get us back on the right cycle track, right, to be done by May, um, I kind of listed out in my head, so informal would take place in November. I thought maybe the November eighteenth meeting, and that, I believe, can be closed because it's a performance discussion, but it's closed at your request, not us. So you would have to request for it if you want it closed. And then I have mid-year as January, but of course, we don't have our meetings set yet. But I don't know if that would be a separate meeting for the mid-year. Mid-year, we do have to do a written progress report for that one, okay? And then, and that could be a separate meeting, because informal, M A S B suggests, suggests thirty minutes for informal. So, we could always do it before, if it's closed, or however we choose to do that. Um, and then I have the next informal check-in at thirty minute, I'm sorry, in March, and then the annual in May.
Gotcha.
And I'm assuming that based on how we're doing this, we wanna keep it this way and not go back to that smaller committee doing those informals, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't stepping out and assuming, but do, does, do those timelines sound good? For everyone, okay?
Can I say, just a clarifying question? Between now and November eighteenth, do you, I was gonna revise, um, the second goal for sure, and update, do you want me just to send those to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, before the eighteen.
Yeah, okay.
So we can, because I, we need to approve the goals, if I'm not mistaken. We need to share them out, and we need to.
I'll probably even send them within the next two weeks, because it's something I'll just do right away and send it out.
You can approve them at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions, the regular?
Turn it back off to the president.
All right. Next item on the agenda is one eighty-five, one eighty-six point two five, citizens comment on, comments on non-agenda items. Sample? I'm kidding, I'm just, I'm sorry, I had to make the joke one more time. Had to make the joke one more time. Oh yeah, that's why we need you over there, sorry.
Did you fill out this one?
No, I didn't.
Will you fill one out before you do?
Yes. Jen, you talked about the, the third graders, who are probably now fourth graders, being below that fifty percent. They were COVID kids. They, they, they missed out on kindergarten and whatever. And then, um, also, when you were talking about having the principals coming in and giving their reports and stuff, you can turn it into like a, a challenge, an attendance challenge, um, an academic challenge. Go high school, high school, middle school, middle school, and maybe have elementarys challenge each other to, um, to get it up, and have it a point of pride for that school. That was all I thought of, and then, um. Board, please, 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 offer Ms. Curry the superintendent position, and Ms. Curry, please, accept it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Absolutely, thank you.
I waved at you three times. Three times.
Anybody else first?
Ladies first.
Ladies first, okay. Here's my form.
Yay.
We knew you had one.
I, you, I, I have a few of them saved up. Okay, um, few things. This was brought up to me a few times, so, again, we're talking about community involvement. You know that I speak for the community and bring it to the board. Um, are there any future plans to completely close up some of the fences around the playground areas at the elementary level? I've begun, I have gotten notification about certain students, younger ones, um, wandering off the property and having to be found in the neighborhood. This is a safety issue that I've been talked to. I don't give the information out, I hold it, but I wanna get it to them, so that is a concern. Some are spec ed, some weren't, so I'm just letting you know that there's that issue, um. Yeah, I reiterate, because it was talked in the board packet already, and we talked about it earlier, because you, resolution went in, I reiterate my voice with the millage. Social media needs to be swarmed by this. We are running out of time. Please make videos for the website. You could do Facebook, Instagram, however, I'm not that social savvy. Um, I have mentioned this in a January meeting. I seem to be the only one talking about this. And I know that we've been very, 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 very inundated and busy with everything else that's going on with the finances, but the time is ticking, and if you guys want this passed, we are a new administration, but this needs to be done, so let that out. I do wanna say, while we were talking about, while the board was talking, um, about all the goals, social media is the way to answer the question. For me, Ms. Sample, I've rudely talked to the board president. I've done my due diligence. I filled this out. Sometimes I put my email, sometimes I put my phone number, but you had my contact. Since December, since I've done this, and I've spoken at every meeting except for April, because I was not here in April, I never get my questions answered. Now, yes, last night I left early, and, um, one of the board members did reiterate about the finance meeting. I was given that information. I understand, yes, you could say it in your comments, I get that information. But a lot of my questions and comments are overlooked, and I'm a little irked about that. But I do give my due diligence, I filled this out. Nobody has contacted me. I have not been reached out, and I've been back here since November, and especially in December. So you're asking for community involvement, and you know what I stand from, I get information from people, I bring it to you. They're asking me what's going on. I don't know. My question and comment to you is, use social media for it. So if I don't get my question answered, okay, the board, the media can put it on the Facebook page or Instagram, saying, well, this was brought up. So, if I don't get the email, phone number, I can let the people know, it's on the page, it just got put out. It can be shared, just the way. Last thing, just, I would love to hear this, can I get clarification, and reporting what she said, on an update on the superintendent's search? Are we just removing her acting superintendent, just giving it to the superintendent? I would like to know that. I know that this is a busy time of the year, but we do need a superintendent. Acting is great. I would like Ms. Curry to have the actual title of it, if she would so like to accept. But if that is going on and there is a search, I would like to know that information. Thank you very much.
I feel like I can say something, because we never moved back to a formal meeting.
Technically, you're right, so I, I can't, I can't call you that.
So, um, what school is that that needs to fix?
There are two that I've heard of, um, so I took the main one, um, and I think it was, where did they? I have not gone to look, so I don't know.
Wildwood, what other school?
Wildwood doesn't have a fence all the way.
Wildwood is a big one. Hamilton doesn't have anything on the backside. That's mine. I can, I can test that.
Oh, okay.
There's only one in the front, and there's nothing on the backyard, over there.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm, I'd be saying there are two schools that, please go look at the fencing situation, because some of the kids this school year have, not really.
And I think our concern about a social media, um, reply would be, it would have to be one-way. Because if it's allowed to get feedback, it would, it, it could run over, and you know, words can be misperceived.
Sure.
Yeah, so it would have to be a one-way connection. So I guess we need to both go back to a formal meeting, so I can stop being out of order.
You're fine at this point. You're fine at this point. Uh, do we have any other comments? Appreciate the, uh, form.
Ah, yeah, thank you.
Have you introduced yourself first?
So, my name is Andrew Ambrose. Um, all of you on the board know me. Uh, last November, I applied to, uh, to fill the vacancy. Uh, honestly, I can say, the better candidate got, got the position on the board. And I am sad to see him, as of December, no longer going to be serving on the board. I hope it's not the last time we see of you, see of that individual, though. It was. It was refreshing tonight to hear from a professional educator on her goals for this district. And what she wants to accomplish. Going through the, the M step scores in this district that were just released, it, it's concerning that literacy and math rates are as low as they are. And I am heartened to hear that there is a plan to improve them. Working as an engineer, I deal with math. Working at the plant, I have to know how to communicate, not only with my fellow engineers, but with the hourly individuals that I have to deal with. And so math and literacy are what sets our students up for success. And when it come, came to the, to the goal talking, Dr. Weaver, I agree, sixty percent is, would be a great goal, but in our, my field, we have what we call objectives and stretch objectives. And my advice would be fifty percent would be the objective for meeting expectations. And then a stretch objective of ten to fifteen percent beyond that for and exceed, uh, expectations. That would be my recommendation to the board. And should I be fortunate to serve come this January, that would be my recommendation going forward as a member of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is one eighty-seven point two five, acting superintendent's report comments.
Um, just thank you for the dialogue tonight. I love the, um, thought partnering and getting all on the same page to set goals, so we can all see success. So thank you. I thought it was wonderful.
And, uh, next item, one eighty-eight point two five, review and recommendations, Board of Education, um, Zappy Mitchell.
I would like to also say thank you for, um, this dialogue and being able to talk informal to try to set up goals for the superintendent and acting superintendent and be able to move forward. But I would also like to say, I was gonna say it in my comments last night, but I wasn't able. I would like, like to just say, thank you. We have had so many donors donate stuff to, um, our resource center. We have a resource center for families. We have one here at John Glenn, Adams and Franklin, for our students and families. And they have everything, usually what they have available is anything from socks, shoes, soap powder, hygiene items. So I just encourage our families, if you need it, call ahead and make sure where they open at in their hours, because I wouldn't wanna send you no place without calling ahead. And, uh, also, I would like to say, today, me and another board member, Melody Heinz, we had the opportunity to go over to the Career Tech, where Ford and Lincoln, um, Ford, Bill Brown Ford, they donated two Mustangs, and, um, Lincoln donated a Lincoln. Um, and, uh, children was excited. They have a nice program available for age sixteen. Um, they can go to school, no, they can get a job there as a mechanic, but they can't drive. But they can learn this trade, and also they can go to school for eight weeks, work for eight weeks while they getting paid, all the way until they get, for twenty-four months, until they get their social, social.
Associate.
Associate's degree. So that's a nice program, and our, some of our youth was excited. Um, it was a young man there that been working there for two years, that talked to our youth. He came from another school district, but he been there for two years, and he's making ninety thousand. At, at, um, at twenty years old. So it was a nice program. We had many people here, and it was very nice, and I just wanna say thank you to them. And my last comment is that we just celebrated, well, September is Suicide Awareness Month. And my last comment is that we just celebrated, well, September is Suicide Awareness Month. Y'all know I'm a calendar, you know, I go by everything on the calendar. And if they ain't celebrating nothing on the calendar, I find things to celebrate. So, um, September is Suicide Awareness Month. We just celebrated the nine eight eight day on September the eighth. So it's one year old and it's something to celebrate. And it's something to thank God that we have available. In that one year, we had ten million point eight, ten point eight million people contact them for care, whether it was suicide or they just needed some guidance and some support. And to have that around for only twelve months and get that turnaround. So I, I encourage our students, if you need help or you feel like you need help, or if you're not sure that you need help, you can call or text nine eight eight for help. We also have it on our website, I read it today. They are also, on the website for the Wayne Westland School District, they are also announcing that September is Suicide Awareness Month. So it's help there. And if you feel like you need help, if you think like you need help, if you can't pull yourself up out the bed in the morning, it's okay to call nine eight eight and ask for help. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. May.
They never know what to say when I get finished.
So, um, I just want to thank Ms. Curry and, um, my fellow board members, the team. Um, I felt like today was a very productive conversation. Um, this is the first time that I, you know, that we've engaged in this type of dialogue, just around, um, our various visions for the district and, and how to move forward. And it was really nice and refreshing just to be able to have a conversation. So thank you for that and thank you for, um, accepting my text messages today.
I appreciate that.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the meeting today. And like, uh, Trustee Abney Mitchell's talked about, today was an exciting event to see these opportunities for the youth. I mean, this is Wayne Westland is top of the line. We're always doing innovative, uh, type programs. Um, I just got this from Maria, uh, so, uh, we're having a Wayne Westland Community Schools is having a trunk or treat. It's going to be October the seventeenth from five to six thirty PM at the Board of Education Courtyard. Um, so that'd be at three, six, seven, four, five, Marquette, uh, Marquette, Westland. So definitely, if anybody in the community would like to donate candy and stuff, that'd be awesome. And, um, I'm really excited, because like I said, Wayne Westland, we're a big community and we like to do a lot with the kids. Um, I'm excited about homecoming coming up. I'm excited about the Wayne versus Glenn game on Fridays. I'm a zebra rocket, and part of my son, he ended up graduating from innovative, so I'm like all three schools. So I'm excited about promoting that. And, um, today we had a meeting, so I'm the president of the Wayne Westland Greater Area Kiwanis Club. And since literacy is the issue, we help with literacy. So we have our meetings on the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of every month at three fifteen at the Westland Library. Um, the next meeting is going to be October the eighth, and after that, it's going to be on the twenty-second, so we are official. Um, I'm excited that we had a group donate four hundred dollars for us to start our key club at John Glenn High School. So we're excited about that. Um, so I have some flyers about the kids' club from ages six to eleven, that's elementary school. They have a builders, age eleven to fourteen, middle school, um, key club, secondary high school, fourteen to eighteen. And this is an international club. So we do a lot in the community when it comes to literacy programs, service projects. Um, if you guys are in like Honor Society or Upper Bound and you're trying to get some extra service credits, definitely give us a call. Thank you.
President Gray, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
It, it just really makes you proud when you walk into the Career Tech and, and you have the marketing executive from Ford Motor Company standing next to you, and she say, this is top-notch equipment. This is the equipment that we have in our shops. That just made me feel so proud, as if I went out there and purchased it myself. But that's what our Career Tech has.
Dr. Weaver?
Yeah, um, I would like to say a thank you to Ms. May for leading us in the, uh, discussion tonight. I thought it was an admirable job and I feel more qualified to, uh, evaluate. I'd like to thank Mr. Ambrose for, for being here, and I always want to acknowledge that. And, uh, Ms. Abney Mitchell has, um, qualified me to serve on two more additional committees. I would like to make her the, uh, chairman of the committee on the committees of committee. So, uh, maybe she could do that.
I want to, I want, I want to experience different committees. That's the only way that I'm going to learn how to support our students and our family, if I know what's going on.
I love the, um, comments from the community that was here tonight. I am in the camp that I believe we ought to offer the, uh, superintendency to Ms. Curry. I like a couple of things about her. Well, I like a lot of things about her, but I like that, um, her attitude is, okay, if you said it, I'm going to try to make it work. I also, um, like that, uh, she is transparent and that what she says, she means. And, and I am, um, all in on this. Um, I think that, um, we would be in bad shape right now if she decided to go back to her old job and say, forget it. I, um, I think that, um, as long as Ms. Curry is meeting the needs of the board information-wise, that we need to give serious consideration to doing this and doing it now. Thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you. And I, uh, I want to thank those members of the board that were here and are, allowed our one and a half hour meeting to, uh, go this late, but I think that's great, because I think, uh, that this subject is something that deserves all of the consideration we gave tonight. And I want to thank Ms. Curry for being so receptive to everything we had to say. And, um, you know, never once was there a time that, you know, you may have offered suggestions of ways things might not work and might work better, but you never pushed back on, uh, you know, no, we can't do that, no, you know, even, uh, even, you know, ever, even if, if you weren't in agreement with, you know, potential goals we had or anything, you, you never, you know, you never said no, you know? You never said no. Um, and I, I really appreciate that. Um, and I appreciate members of the community for being here tonight. And, uh, like I've said before, even though there, there is just a few people here, I, I appreciate members of the community being at things like this and being at our finance committee meeting like we had a couple of weeks ago. It shows, uh, dedication to, um, not only staying informed, but keeping us accountable up here. But, uh, again, thank you and thank you for our staff being here to this late hour on one, like, one more night, taking our notes and minutes and making sure that, uh, everything ran smoothly. Um, with that, the last item on the agenda is, what number is it? One eighty-nine point two five, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have support?